Go ahead.
Judge, would you like to introduce our Pledge of Allegiance students today?
Yes, thank you, Jessica. Good morning, everyone. It is my pleasure today to introduce the Mission Ridge 5th Grade Student Council. So we have today with us Caleo Murga, Valerie Espino, Nylea Calderon, and Idali Hinojos. Thank you so much for being here with us.
Welcome. Thank you. We're ready for you.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Our student council. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the midst of all evil and injustice for all. And honor the Texas flag. Our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God and one mind full.
Thank you very much. That was very nice. Have a wonderful Valentine's Day and spread the love, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Bye bye.
And now an invocation from Roman Bustillos.
Hi, Roman. Thank you.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Let us pray. Good morning, Heavenly Father. We thank you once again for today and we thank you for all of the blessings that you have granted each of us. As we begin this week on this beautiful Valentine's Day that serves as a reminder for our love and for one another. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for your love and your mercy that you so generously pour out upon us each and every single day. Heavenly Father, we ask for your continued blessings and today we ask that you send the Holy Spirit to bless our judge, our commissioners, the staff, and all those appearing before the Commissioners' Court and that all of their dealings may be fair and honest and for the goodness of the health and the welfare of our community and that our actions further glorify your name, Heavenly Father. Please bless our judge and commissioners with the virtues of wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and fortitude to make the best decisions for our community. Heavenly Father, we ask that you continue to heal our community, our country, and the entire world from all diseases and every affliction that challenges our humanity, especially those communities that are devastated by natural disasters. And Heavenly Father, we humbly ask that you protect our military sons and daughters from harm's way, especially with the current threat in the Ukraine. Heavenly Father, we raise up our humble praise of thanksgiving and our faithful prayer through the intercession of all our brothers and sisters, our Blessed Mother, all your angels and saints, and Heavenly Father, we raise up this petition to you through the precious blood, body, soul, divinity of your dearly beloved Son, our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Roman. This is very special on this special day on Valentine's. Thank you for your time and your words and we're very appreciative and you're always welcome. Thank you for being here today with us. Thank you.
God bless.
God bless you too.
Judge, would you like to make any opening comments before we begin?
Yes, just want to, on behalf of the Commissioners and myself, we want to wish all of you a happy Valentine's and welcome you to Commissioners' Court. And I'd like to sort of take the opportunity that for those of us Commissioners and myself, when we saw what happened in the pandemic and it's very difficult to try to find something positive, but there is. And I think one of the things on this very special day is this sense of gratitude, you know, honoring the people that died, but also the people, you know, that made it, that were here now, and this sense of full appreciation, the blessings that we have, and be thankful. And I think every Valentine's should be a reminder of how life is and how grateful we are. So I hope that Valentine now signifies forever that we have a deeper appreciation. A lot of people talk about how they've learned about, you know, going forward, but I'm not sure it's just going to happen by just saying it. I think it's going to happen by acting out our love and caring for people, understanding the forgiveness, the healing, all the things that need to happen as we move out of the pandemic, slowly move out of the pandemic. So I thank, you know, thank all of you for being here. We really appreciate the time that you take and once again, just spread that love and care for those that really need to be helped in this moment. So thank you very much.
Judge, may I make a comment also just really?
Absolutely, Commissioner.
Thank you, Judge. As you know, we had the El Paso Marathon this past, just yesterday actually, that started in the Mission Valley. So I just wanted to congratulate one of our very own here from our county families. So Jed Untorecker from the County Attorney's Office ran the entire marathon. So I just wanted to give a shout out to him. Hopefully he's watching. But 26 miles is a huge accomplishment. So congratulations, Jed.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Great picture.
It was really cold. Really, really cold. But it turned out to be a beautiful day.
It wasn't too cold at the end where I was at?
No, it was nice. It was nice by the time, yeah.
I said, okay, Commissioner, you take the front part, I'll take the end part.
At seven in the morning at sunny Lee was very cold, very cold. But it was beautiful. It was a wonderful event. So congratulations, Jed.
And all the, there were 2,200 participants. That's quite a, when you're competing with not only a little bit of cold, but also competing with a Super Bowl, you know, that's a great number. So thank you for reminding us, Commissioner.
It was a wonderful event.
Go ahead, Jessica.
Item number four is the Consent Agenda composed of items 4A through 4W. Are there any items members of the court or public would like to pull for further discussion?
Commissioners?
Judge?
Yes.
Can I ask for Q, R, and S, please?
Q, R, and S?
Yes.
Any others?
Okay, perfect.
I move to approve the rest.
Second?
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item five, Resolutions. Approve and adopt a resolution recognizing February 14, 2022 as El Paso Children's Hospital Day in the County of El Paso.
Commissioner Robinson?
Yes, good morning, everyone. Judge, I've been given the privilege to present this resolution for the Children's Hospital, their 10th anniversary. There were a lot of doubts at the beginning when the hospital was thought of as was building a children's hospital. There's some question, need to have a children's hospital, but today it evident that we do need a hospital and it's very prosperous and been very effective to provide service to our community. And I believe we have some people here to testify to that, but we'll go and read the resolution.
Go ahead, Caesar.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Caesar Navo with the County Administration Department, reading the resolution on behalf of Commissioner Robinson. Whereas each year thousands of children in West Texas, Southern New Mexico region require specialty pediatric medical care. And whereas El Paso Children's Hospital was established by the community to be the first ever separately licensed hospital dedicated to pediatric care. And whereas that has continually recruited pediatric specialists, established seven pediatric specialty clinics, and thousands of families have since been able to stay in El Paso for specialized pediatric treatment instead of traveling out of town. And whereas February 14, 2022 marks 10 years since the hospital's grand opening. Now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court that February 14, 2022 shall be known as El Paso Children's Hospital Day in the County of El Paso. Sign this 14th day of February 2022 by Commissioner Carlos Leon, Precinct 1; Commissioner David Stout, Precinct 2; Commissioner Ilana Olgin, Precinct 3; Commissioner Carl Robinson, Precinct 4; and our County Judge Ricardo Sanmaniego.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And Judge, I believe we have the person in charge of the Children's Hospital, Ms. Stout.
hospital. However, today, standing amongst me are all of our team members that in their own right do something phenomenal for the hospital. So I do want to make sure that I call out several individuals for you all. I'd like to introduce Amy Ross. She is our board member, not just at El Paso Children's Hospital, but also too at El Paso Children's Hospital Foundation. We're very proud of the work that she's done with us. I'd also like to introduce Dr. Bill Spurbeck. Dr. Spurbeck is one of our phenomenal general surgeons. I would tell you over and over again, if I had a child who needed surgery, that's my go-to man. Not only is he a phenomenal surgeon, but he also served as our Chief of Medical Staff as well as our Surgeon-in-Chief. So he's helping us to grow our surgical lines at the hospital. Kelly Bannister is really unique. She's been with the hospital since inception and so we're really proud of the work that she does. She's our Director over Imaging Services as well as Cardiac Services. But oftentimes, you know, I take a step back and I really think about what's the focus of the hospital. It's really about the kids. And today we have two teenagers who've decided to join us today and I would like for you to hear from them. The first one that I want to introduce you to is Susanna Obregon and her mama, Susanna as well. Susanna is a warrior in her own right. She has beat cancer four times. And so I would like for you to hear from them.
Want to say something? Thank you and thank you, El Paso Children's Hospital. I mean, she's super shy. She doesn't talk much, but thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for having us here. And, and for us, El Paso Children's Hospital has been completely life-changing. If it wasn't for the great staff, great doctors, nurses, and everybody at El Paso Children's Hospital, I don't think that we will be able to be here today, that she wouldn't be able to be here today. So I definitely owe to the hospital with the heart my daughter's life.
Well, thank you for saying that. And she doesn't speak, but her courage does, really. I mean, just amazing.
Yeah.
We love you, okay?
What are you saying?
And she's not as shy as what she leads on. After a while, when she starts talking, uh, beware. Our next individual that I would love to introduce is Kayla Gomez. Kayla has seizures, a history of seizures. And so one of the things that Kayla's been doing is that you may recognize her as one of not just our areas, but our nationwide boxers that is up and coming. We expect to see that she will be in the Olympics and we are very proud of what she's done. So I'd like to introduce you to Kayla and to her mom as well.
Excellent.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Kayla.
As you may know, I do boxing and at a very young age, I suffered from epilepsy. And I'm just so thankful to El Paso Children's Hospital. They have done so much for me, not only in like helping me, but in my boxing. They've always been there to support me, whether it's helping me with my epilepsy and helping me in my boxing. So I'm really thankful. And, you know, doing boxing, you would never think, you know, I would do this. So this is what I love to do and I'm just thankful for everything you guys have done for me and for being here today. It's an honor.
Oh, how nice of you to say that. And that's really encouraging that you have a challenge, but you turned it into an opportunity. So thank you so much. Do we get a little bit of a, a little bit of exhibition? Thank you, thank you. Thank you for that.
She is an adversary on that boxing, that's for sure. I would also like to introduce just very quickly John Runkels. John?
Hi, John.
He's our Chief Operating Officer.
Yeah, we all know John.
Also, we have Omar Garza, who's our Chief Financial Officer. To his left is Laurel Houston, our Chief Legal Officer. And then we have Daniel Veal, who's our Director of Marketing, as well as Joan Navi. Joan, oh, Joan Navi stepped out, I think. He's doing some videotaping for us. But we thank you all for the support. I know you all have heard about the hospital many times, but I think the one thing that's most striking about the hospital is that really we are the only dedicated children's hospital, highly specialized in a 350-mile radius. And when you're able to say that close to 85% of the kids who used to leave El Paso for care now get to stay at home, that's what a dedicated children's hospital does. And so for all the support that you all have given us and in celebration of what we're going to do this evening, we know we've got our County Judge, our Commissioner Stout, that will be over there also speaking at our birthday celebration, thank you all for your support. And it's always never, it's never ending with you all. And so we appreciate you all. I would like to present each of you all, our very first coins of honor for the hospital for our 10-year celebration. And then we would love to take just a quick picture with you all if that's okay.
Absolutely. Well, Cindy, we want to thank you. We're just so proud. I mean, what you had to go through and almost a criticism because people don't understand the impact of having to leave to, to get care elsewhere. That's what moves me the most when, when I think of the number of, of children that had to at one time be by themselves with their parents and not in their own community. That, that really moves me. I always brag because I lived 150 yards away from, I was born with a midwife right next to the hospital. And then I went to Jefferson. So this is like a place where you saw everything happen. You know, you saw what it used to be and have a real deep appreciation for what it is now. But, but we thank you because, you know, our children, they're so delicate, you know, they can defend for themselves and if the community doesn't do it, then it doesn't happen. And it takes all of you, everything that you do to make it happen. And, you know, surgeons, like Doctor, you just explained that, that could be anywhere else. And I know that for a fact. I mean, you could be anywhere else that, that you'd want to because of your skills and talents and you make a decision to be here. And, and we thank you for that, Doctor, for, for doing that. So Cindy, thank you for you and your team and all of your staff and everyone. I know pandemic was a little difficult and, but you made it work and you made great things happen. So thank you, Cindy, and your team. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the whole team, we appreciate you all.
Yes, Commissioner Robinson?
You know, it's, it's one thing to have a vision, but thing is, you had a vision, but then more so the fact that you supported that vision and make it a reality. One of the biggest obstacles to progress is reluctance to change. So sometimes we have to think back and step back, take a step back and say, you know what, we need to look at this from a positive standpoint. What, I know that we talked about at the beginning, there were obstacles and there were doubters in that regard. But you look at what has happened today and also for where are we going in the future? So God bless you and keep up the good work.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that.
Got it. Stay right there though, because I have good pictures of your camera on my camera here.
One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to work.
Item number six, Public Comment. We do not have any members sign up for a public comment. We will take no action for item number six. Item number seven, County Administration. Receive a report and discuss and take appropriate action regarding the CARES Act Grant, the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act 2021, and the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Wally, good morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Wally Hargo. Good morning. Wally Hargo from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. Item five was special to me too, as well, Judge. I don't know if many of you know it, but before we had a, a Children's Hospital here in El Paso when my daughter was young, we were one of those families that had to leave our community and travel to another children's hospital outside of El Paso for well over 12 years for a number of surgeries. So we're blessed to have that Children's Hospital here in El Paso. And it's also special to me because my wife has proudly worked there and is looking forward to closing out her career at the Children's Hospital here in El Paso.
Oh, how nice. Thank you for letting us know that and sharing that. That's, that's really beautiful to community understand how things have changed because of this Children's Hospital.
Absolutely. I can speak all too well to that. So we are grateful to have that, that facility here in El Paso.
Thank you, Wally.
All right, now I'll get down to, to the numbers. So Judge, Commissioners, Wally Hargo from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. This week's CARES report is relatively unchanged. Expense and purchase orders are at $27.2 million with remaining available funds of just over $286,000. The reconciliation of funding by the Auditor's Office is still in progress. Items of note include the subrecipient agreements with the municipalities, which was budgeted at just over $3.9 million. We currently have slightly over a million dollars still in pending documentation from cities to close out these subrecipient contracts. We're working closely with the entities and the Auditor's Office to close that out. Through this closeout process, the Auditor's has identified some requisitions for Constables 1, 4, and 6 that were not converted to purchase orders in time for the CARES Act project. These requisitions were for purchases to install equipment for vehicles for your constables that will be arriving in March. Today, with, with today's agenda item, we are requesting your favorable approval and authorization to continue reimbursing the salary expenditures from FY '22 with the remaining CARES Act funds and to transfer those general fund reimbursements to a contingency account within our general administrative account and hold those within a special project for the previously approved project for the constables' vehicles. As noted in your weekly updates that you received from County Administration last week, there were some CARES Act requisitions not converted to purchase orders before the year was closed out. As such, we're requesting your authorization to transfer $175,000 to Constables' accounts to pay for the vehicle-related equipment originally requisitioned in November. Those vehicles, as noted, will be received next month and we will require that funding to fully equip them. This amount is a little bit higher than what was originally approved. We are working closely with Mr. Houghton Staple from your Fleet Management on the purchase of these items, as he has noted that these, this funding will be necessary to cover the cost for these vehicles. So with this item, we are asking for your favorable consideration to authorize the balance of unspent CARES funds to reimburse these eligible FY '22 salaries and for, for work performed between October 1st and December 31st of 2021. And to place those funds in our general administrative ops contingency and further approve or authorize the transfer of $175,000 from our ops contingencies to the Constables 1, 4, and 6 equipment account to equip these vehicles. With that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Commissioner Cindy, Commissioner Olgin?
So Wally, I'm sorry, can you just explain a little bit about what the issue was with the purchase orders not being, or I think you said not converted into purchase orders? How did that?
Yes, ma'am. Requisitions were issued in November and unfortunately, prior to the close of the calendar year, which is the CARES Act date that those purchase orders had to be issued by, they did not get converted to purchase orders. They slipped through the cracks. I don't know the exact reasoning behind it. I'll, I'll get a little more background on it and be glad to send that to you in a highlight this week.
Great.
But these funds are necessary to finish the, the equipment of those vehicles and would ask for your favorable consideration.
But there is funding in the contingency.
With, with the transfers we would do with your approval today, that would place the additional funds in the contingencies. We are, we would be transferring those from the reimbursement salary accounts to the contingency. So it would be a net zero budget impact for appropriations for the general fund.
Great, thank you. I'll move to approve if there's no more questions.
Second?
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Sanmaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. There is no report for the American Rescue Plan this week or the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Plan. So that concludes today's update.
Thank you, Wally. Stay close.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
I'll be here.
So was his dogs? That was perfect timing.
They said happy Valentine's.
Yeah, you know, my, my furry coworkers here at the house heard a noise and I apologize.
Just, go ahead and get the items. Commissioner Stout pointed out for the consent agenda?
Yes, we'd like to go to item nine and then the ones from consent right after, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay, item number nine from the American Rescue Plan. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the request for American Rescue Plan Act funding from El Paso County Emergency Services District Number 1. Opinion number 22-0160.
Chief.
My chief.
Pointing, Judge. Commissioners? As you recall, last week, we had discussed a possible Board approval, Commissioner Court's approval for three items. First item was for the autopulse totaling $95,462.01. Second item was for the clinics. Initially, the request was for $8,000 and change, but in talking to Mr. Landeros, we found that if we have some collaboration with the county, we could possibly get the constables to assist with traffic control and alleviate some of the costs that we are bringing in on our own for that. And so the request here for the next four clinics was going to be And so the request here for the next four clinics was going to be $1,500 a clinic totaling $6,000. The last item was the reimbursement for the COVID leave for the members that we had, the 17 members. Again, in talking to Mr. Landeros, we found that, as mentioned before, you've never done this in the history of Commissioners Court. So we would like to delete that one item and just only have the two items on the agenda, being the Autopulse and the clinic reimbursement to allow for the assistance. Now with the clinics, we also discussed, normally we have them at our station, Station Number 2 at 12361 Pas de Aleste. It was highlighted that there are some areas that could utilize the clinics in different locations, being the Awaclada area, and also maybe that area could service Montana Vista. That's not necessarily our district, but here in the grand scheme of things, we're here to collaborate and make the best use of our resources and funding. So with that, we're talking to Dishes. Of course, we would need their approval to move one of our clinics from our Station 2 to the Awaclada area. That will allow some of the Montana Vista residents to come over. Be a lot closer than going to Station Number 2. And we will utilize the county facility that is there off of Kentwood. Also, for another clinic, we had talked about Sparks area, another area that hasn't seen any type of clinics in that location. And so we would consider also moving one of our clinics from Station Number 2 to the Sparks area, the Sheriff's Office that's down there off of Peyton, if Commissioner Court allows for us to utilize both those facilities and as long as Dishes is okay with us facilitating those clinics at those two locations. We do have the next clinic already scheduled for Station Number 2, being that when they came last month, or I should say this month, the first Saturday of February, we told that we would be here so that the residents, the people that came for their first shot, could get their second shot. And advertisement and notifications have already gone through social media. So we don't want to change that aspect of it right now. So our next clinic would be at Station Number 2 on the first Saturday of March. And then April, we could move it to Awaclada or Sparks, depending on where the need was more, and then finish off with whatever we didn't do. And so with that, looking at facilitating those areas there and assisting the community in the areas that we haven't been before. Also with that, understand that the reason we're here today also is because we're seeking alternative funding. We're experiencing some quick growth. I know the court knows that a large portion of the construction is happening in our community. We have two stations that are operating 24/7, 365 days a year. We are fully staffed. We have staffed them with three firefighters, day shift and night shift, one of the few volunteer stations that does that. And that is because we offer a stipend. We are still considered a volunteer department. I am the only paid staff member other than our fire marshals, but under operations for fire, I'm the only one. The capital outlay we discussed for the next 10 years does focus on improvements on medical care, improvements on fire stations. And so we have a plan in place, just that it's going to take some time for the budget to catch up in regards to funding these items. And so we do have a plan. We do have a strategic plan located on our website. If anybody is interested in seeing it, I can deliver it or send it to you all. But it does focus on medical care, focus on providing better services, more enhanced services to the community. Also, last week, if you're not aware, our budget was turned in, our audit was turned in. So there might be some questions in regards to that. In regards to the audit, it showed that we had about $2.8 million in the bank. And I want to kind of break that down just a little bit so y'all can see what, you know, we don't have necessarily that funding just available. Of that $2.8 million, $44,620 is encumbered towards stipend. And again, like I mentioned, the stipend assists us with paying the firefighters for being there and responding. Then we have $312,477 for construction. That is for the admin building that we're looking at here in the future. We have created a committee, and we hope to have that building up in about two years. That's how long it's going to take. Next, for the fire marshal and operating budget, we have approximately $1.2 million allocated towards that for this fiscal year. And lastly, our reserve is at $1.1331,812. And so you can see, we do have the funds in the bank, but they are encumbered for different items, whether it be for construction, the stipend, or just our operating budget. And so with that, I want, looking for the court's approval, if they have any questions in regards to the funding. Again, talked to Mr. Landeros. He had talked to Legal, and I think he's online here, and he can, if I missed anything, can elaborate on that.
Commissioner Olgin, any comments from our last meeting?
No, I just, I want to thank you, Chief, for looking at having those vaccination clinics in some of our more underserved areas of the county. I know for a fact that in Sparks, the county hasn't been able to organize a vaccination clinic there, and I think that would be tremendously beneficial for that community. We've organized a few in Aguadulce, and we always have a very good turnout. But the more that we can be there and give people an opportunity to receive their vaccine, the better. So I just, I want to thank you for those two changes that you made to your proposal. I think they're sorely needed.
And Jose, any additional comments along with the, on the constables? And they were brought in to sort of to see if they could handle that demand?
Yes, Judge Commissioners, good morning. I'll sit on those with county administration. Actually, you have prepared a presentation outlining a little bit of the analysis and the vetting that our staff has done in coordination with budget fiscal policy as well as the county attorney's office. Next slide, please. I won't spend too much time on this. I think Chief explained this very clearly. They were all found to be eligible expenditures, but recognizing that the ESD has now withdrawn the COVID sick leave pay, which would have been covered, but a bit of a departure from what the county has funded in the past. Next slide, please. The analysis with respect to the COVID sick leave, again, this is a general fund offset. So these are expenditures that are being made by the agency. Then same thing with the county and other agencies. And if we were to approve this, it would effectively just provide an offset to the general fund and yield some savings to the overall budget. We did receive a similar request from ESD 2. It was not approved, it was not considered, just to be consistent with the fact that the county had not taken that approach in using neither CARES nor ARPA funds in the similar fashion. We wanted to look a little bit and provide the court with some information about the areas that might be disproportionately impacted and have, you know, traditionally, have traditional, not have traditional access to healthcare. And so we looked at the service area for ESD 1, which includes the Aguadulce Census Designated Place as well as Sparks Census Designated Place. The court had previously requested a little bit more information about what could be done with that far east area to include, you know, Homestead Meadows, North and South Census Designated Places. These are out of district. These are within ESD Number 2. However, they are relatively close to some of the facilities that might be stood up by the ESD 1 in Horizon or in Aguadulce, and just a consideration for the court to keep in mind. During the onset of the pandemic, when there was a significant demand for testing, the county did request information or assistance from ESD 1 and ESD 2 with respect to testing, given that that was the only major activity that we had, you know, one of the only major activities that we had in our tool belt, to go out to the community to try and track cases. In my conversation with the chief last week, the ESD 1 was not able to provide that assistance at that time, just given the limited staffing resources that he spoke to right now as well. Not a lot of full-time employees on their staffing table, which prevents them from being able to have those large staffing events. However, the chief did indicate that there would be a possibility to partner in the future to provide them with some assistance and staffing resources to have those testing sites in place. Obviously, right now, we're seeing a demand decrease for testing, which speaks to the fact that we're currently on the crest of the surge that we just saw with Omicron. And I think this is a critical time for us to think about how, as an agency, we can plan ahead so we can have more testing in some of these communities, like the Colonia's that are listed up there on the slide. So there is some potential to have a good conversation with ESD 1 about how the county can use some of its resources to help them stand up some of these testing facilities, just as they've stood up some of these quarantine, excuse me, vaccination facilities as well. Lastly, we are working with budget and fiscal policy, and I believe Mr. Hargo is on the line to answer any questions the court may have. We did just want to provide a snapshot of the organizational financial health of ESD 1. Had a $4.7 million operating budget. As the chief mentioned, their audit was just submitted to the county last week. And in reviewing that, the operating reserve is estimated to be around 28% or at $1.3 million. The guidance for the ESDs with respect to the level of funding that they should have in place for, or that the district and the county should aim to have for their operational reserve is anywhere between 25 and 35%. So they do have a relatively healthy fund balance that is meeting their, you know, the internal policy guidance. Additional consideration is the fact that the district implemented for the first time a sales tax, which is estimated to bring in about half a million dollars worth of revenue. The ESD's sales tax is applicable to everything in Horizon City proper, as well as all of the unincorporated area along East Lake. That includes the new East Lake Marketplace, the Amazon facility, and any commercial activity throughout that corridor, and goes as far north as the Southern Soul and Lupe 375. So ESD 1 is, you know, may be typically thought of as just the Horizon City ESD, but when you look at the actual service boundaries, it includes a lot, a large unincorporated area as well, which we actually analyzed a little bit for the court on the next slide. So I'm going to jump to that fourth bullet and just let you know that the service population of ESD 1 is just shy of about 60,000. ESD 2 is just shy of about 100,000. However, the unincorporated area in ESD 1 is nearly 60% when you include these Colonia's, some of the new development that we're seeing along East Lake. So the county's partnership with ESD 1 and ESD 2 is obviously critical to ensure that we can continue to provide service to residents who live in these areas. Jumping back up to that first bullet point, the funding that the court has directed use for has always been an increasing access for some of these underserved areas. And in the conversation with the chief last week, and what he mentioned today, there is a willingness to think about how we can try to expand access to some of these more underserved areas. And the emphasis has also been on providing not just the on-demand vaccination, which the ESD is doing right now, but also testing. So we'd like to explore that, if this is the direction that the court would like to pursue. Realistically, the county has not provided very much funding for capital expenditures to external agencies. If that capital expenditure can somehow come back to the county. So we've procured some command units that are utilized in the field by the ESD 2 right now and by the SO's office for some of their operations, but ultimately, that can come back to the county. Same thing with some of the message boards that will be utilized to provide some of the traffic control and notice to the communities that ESD 2 is currently utilizing. Those will end up coming back into Public Works Infrastructure Services once the demand for those signs is no longer there. And so the capital request for the Autopulse equipment is not necessarily consistent with how some of the funding has been allocated for in the past. There is a potential, if, you know, the court could direct staff to draft and the county attorney's office to draft a subrecipient agreement to fund this, and we would identify funding within the portfolio and bring that back for the court's approval and ratification. Another option would be that the county could potentially allow for this to be applied for under the ARPA NOFO that we are currently working on, that is set aside to provide funding to external nonprofit agencies. And the parameters of who can receive that funding are to be set by the court. So it could be traditional nonprofits. It could include other units of local government who may have not received funding. That might include other water districts. That might include the ESDs. So those are something, that's another consideration that the court may want to discuss and consider. And then lastly, the municipal support from Horizon City. Given that, we did talk a little bit about the service area and the population that ESD 1 serves, but there is a large central single municipality within ESD 1 that might also consider providing some support for some of that equipment as well. So these, again, are just intended as policy considerations, topics that the court may want to consider as they're discussing, as you all are discussing what action you may like to take this morning. But we put this together, and I want to very much thank the county attorney's office and budget and fiscal policy for providing their analysis and their input for the court this morning. I'm available to take any questions that you may have this morning.
Jose, just one of the comments I'd like to make is that this is one of the first time that we talk ESD 1, ESD 2 in the same breath kind of thing. And I really encourage that, the synergism between the two. As you recall, at the beginning, ESD 2 really took on almost like if they were in charge of all the, you know, the rural areas, trying to get people out there, the Torneo project and all of that. And so I really want to, I look forward to this sort of coming together and even in budget, if we could address a little bit of, how do we create this synergism? Because I'll be very honest with you, at the beginning, it just looked like two entities, each one going in their own direction and not coming together. And so the chief as well, you know, I encourage that this, you know, getting together. There's no way that we could be as powerful by separate entities as we would coming together and deciding how do we attack the testing, the, you know, challenge with the vaccine, but in the holistic approach of the two. And so I'm very encouraged because we're starting to see percentages and things that they do. But I was sure would like to see something a lot better than I saw at the beginning, where we really didn't understand who was supposed to be doing what. And I just don't want it to be by accident, but by design, that we have the same challenges in mind as we move forward with the virus or any emergency that we see ourselves as two entities coming together to be successful in the county. Commissioners?
Thanks, Judge. You know, Judge, I forgot to answer your question. I apologize. We did have a conversation about how the constables might be able to support some of their traffic control, crowd management needs. And so if the court does approve this, and even if the court doesn't approve it and the ESD is moving forward with those vaccination events, those clinics, that demand still exists. And so we will definitely coordinate with the constables to ensure that there is some support for that freeing up the ESD staff to continue to do, you know, what they're working on in those vaccination clinics and not necessarily have to worry about managing traffic and people and the flow of those individuals around these testing areas.
And I can tell you, and I know all the commissioners, and especially Commissioner Leon, the constables really make a tremendous difference in the lines and just the presence of some of the things, that they're not just directing traffic, but helping with a lot of different things throughout. And so I do encourage also that we continue to see them as that potential. It could have been very costly in any other way if they hadn't come into play. And so thank you for reaching out to them and also let the chief know what we can do or what they can do to be as successful as they've been with the other initiatives. Commissioner Olgin?
Thank you, Judge. I would like to see the implementation of the vaccination clinics in the underserved areas that we talked about as quickly as possible. And it doesn't seem like that's a very big amount that the chief is asking for in the second part of his request. So my question, Jose, is has that, have we identified where that funding might come from? I'm looking at the ARPA portfolio, and I know, I see that we do have some line items where maybe that amount might be able to come from. But I feel like that's something that we would want to do as quickly as possible, and we would want the chief to start working on the scheduling, things like that.
Agree. Commissioner Leon?
Yes, Commissioner, we?
Just a second, Jose, Commissioner Leon?
Okay.
Yeah, and just following up with what Commissioner Olgin was talking about. Chief, I think that the mobile unit that UMC utilizes, you can also partner up with them as you move from location to location, whether it's Sparks, Square Dance, there's so many locations in Vinton that I'm sure they'd love to partner up with you and have a plan that we can advertise, that we can actually, that the folks out there will be able to see, hey, I can get the vaccine here.
Yes, sir. And right now, we partner with Dishes. Dishes provides additional manpower. They bring in resources from anywhere between eight to 15 to 20 nurses and staff online that assist us with that, because without them, it would be very difficult. We're asking for three staff members to assist on top of what they provide to us. And so it isn't just all us. And so we have partnered with Dishes, and so they do a fantastic job. They partner with other organizations within Dishes. And so through their collaboration, they help us out tremendously. And so, and Judge, to add on to what you had mentioned, whenever we can with ESD Number 2, we do collaborate. Sometimes ESD 2 and ESD 1 have different strategic plans set out. We have different needs for our community, for the areas that we serve. And so in our case, being one of the fastest-growing areas of the community, our plans are a little bit different in regards to maybe ESD 2s. bit different in regards to maybe ESD2s. But I talk regularly with the Chief of Sparza. We have MOUs in place for, you know, firefighting, for different plans of action. And so when we can, we actually, you know, we definitely collaborate, but there's times that we just not-
One of the points that you made, Judge, in regards to emergency-type situations is who's going to be in charge. I think it would be very important that we have more collaboration and cooperation among all entities, but the same thing is that you make a point from a standpoint that if we do have emergency, who's in charge? So is it in his area? It may be emergency, it'd be another area, but overall, who's in charge? I think it's incumbent on the county, because we were talking about El Paso County, someone in El Paso County should be in charge. When you say overall, I'm not saying, you're talking about separately, we'll say a specific area, like in my region that I represent. So we got ESD2. So by you say overall, who's in charge? So I think that there should be, like, emergency management center, there cover emergency-type situations. But the question that we need to answer is, based on the comment you made, is who's, overall, who's in charge?
Because I seem to remember that it would be the county judge's office that is statutory and in charge of emergency management at the county.
Yeah, we actually have been working on that contract, Christina, thank, and make some comments as well. But we're really sort of identifying that it's very clear, some of the steps and the things that need to happen when there's an emergency. I think there was a lot of vagueness as to who was going to do what. And so in the new contract, I think we're trying to specify that a little bit better, Commissioner. Well, you want to comment, Christina?
No, I was just gonna, yes, I was gonna comment, not no. But yes, so under the Texas Government Code, there is a provision that indicates in times of emergencies or issues involving emergencies, and there is a discrepancy in terms of how to approach certain emergency situations within the county. And just to remind individuals, the county does include the city of El Paso and of course, of course, the other municipalities. The county judge's direction and decision would prevail. And again, that's as it pertains to those emergency orders. We are working and currently right now under negotiations with the city on that OEM, Office of Emergency Management, in a local agreement. Some of the provisions in there include the communication, and then of course, our emergency management plan and the annexes and in terms of what resources and educational benefits they will be providing to the county. So that is being reworked. It is not done, but that'll come back at a future, at a future date. But in terms of, you know, issues, in terms of the direction that the court would want to go, of course, it's always within your purview how you want to do that. And that is especially true, for example, if you're talking about the emergency allocation of funding that has been directed to you all. So when you're discussing, you know, ARPA funding and back when the COVID pandemic had started, CARES funding, you know, we are providing that additional assistance that's requested by some of these outside organizations. And that is why we memorialize what the county wants to do or the direction and the scope of services that you all would like to do in that type of an agreement that sets that out. And so that is certainly something within your purview, especially when you're talking about that federal funding allocation.
Judge, can we go back to Jose, just regarding my question about where the funding might be able to come from for the vaccination clinics, based on the ARPA portfolio?
Yes, Commissioner, the, right now, we are in the process of identifying some project savings, working with some of the departments that we feel confident we can identify that savings. For a lot of these larger projects that are still being rolled out and in their early implementation stages, we feel it's best to allow them to retain that funding just in case there's any unforeseen circumstances that may come up that may affect the successful deployment of the project. However, there are some others that have been moving that we feel we can cover some of these expenses and some of the other expenses that have come up, including the funeral assistance. And we're actually preparing to bring that back to the court in two weeks on the 20th, at your meeting then. So we feel confident that we can capture this entire request or any portion that the court may identify of it. And that's, and that specific project is the Enterprise Zoom account. In discussing the costs with the DA's office and the public defender's office, it was significantly overbudgeted. We overestimated their needs. And now that those invoices have actually been processed and we can accurately forecast the cost for a year, we should be bringing back that amendment to reduce that project scope and to right-size the budget that would then free up additional funds that could establish any new projects moving forward and potentially looking at saving of about $200,000 within that specific line item.
Thank you, Jose.
Well, I would like for the court to be able to take action on the vaccination clinics, the support for the vaccination clinics. I think those are incredibly important in these underserved areas. Regarding the larger request, I understand that that's not specifically budgeted for in the ARPA portfolio, but it is also something that is incredibly important for the community. I know that I would be in agreement to allowing outside agencies to apply for funding through the NOFO process. I know we had briefly touched on that last week, and I'm not sure how everyone else feels about it, but I don't see a reason why we wouldn't allow outside agencies, wouldn't give them an avenue to be able to request additional funding from the county. We've opened it up to nonprofit organizations that, of course, are doing tremendous work in the county, but I don't feel that we should exclude some of our partner agencies. I think we should open that up to them as well.
I agree as well.
I can agree with that as well, Judge, wholeheartedly, because you're talking about the overall effectiveness in service. Bottom line, we're talking about providing service to our community, whether it be on the east side, the west side, wherever it is. We're talking about El Paso County, we're providing service to our community. So if we have a situation where we need ESD1 to come and assist, we know we can count on them. It should be a question about it. So bottom line is, again, we're talking about providing service to our people that we represent, and so I'm all for that and our support.
Judge, I understand the need as well, but it gives me heartburn to put more people into competition for a pot that's already very tiny, in my opinion, you know, for, you know, providing funding for some of our partners. I feel like, you know, every, it seems like we continue to widen the pool of possible recipients, but we're not widening the pool of resources that we're providing. And so it gives me heartburn because that just means that, you know, the pie is not getting bigger, but we're looking at maybe, you know, pitting more people, more people against, you know, or more organizations against each other. So, I mean, I don't know if, you know, there's another, another way to do that, or if there's another pot of money we can look at for this fund, for this type of funding. Have we, have we heard definitively back from UMC as to whether they're going to be needing to use all of the money that we gave them? Because I know that they were going to be possibly getting money from FEMA that could, you know, right, offset the cost that they're incurring for pandemic-related expenditures, and then it may free up some of that funding that we gave them.
Joel, do you have any feedback on that?
That's definitely something we can look into. I'll-
And I actually, I don't know the specific answer to your question, Commissioner. I did have a conversation with Jacob Sintron last week. They are having difficulties, though, with that conflict between, for the Medicare reimbursement funds that they haven't been paid, I want to say since October, since the beginning of the fiscal year. So both the Children's Hospital and UMC are facing that shortfall because the state and the federal agency can't seem to agree on the release of that money. So I'm not sure if UMC is going to be able to free up any of those funds, because they're being squeezed now from this other conflict that's arisen between the state and the federal Medicare reimbursement agency.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, that's definitely, you know, a point to take into consideration, but we give them that money to use it for pandemic-related expenditures, not to plug a hole that may be there for another, from another-
Well, they continue to spend money on pandemic-related expenditures.
Sure. Right. But, but I guess, to me, it's, what would be funded by Medicaid is different than what would, you know, the money that would, for pandemic expenditures would be, right? It seems to me that that's two different types of expenditures. So, maybe we can look into that.
Judge, yeah, we can definitely engage UMC on that and just determine what their needs are and what they're going to be covering and if the entire 34.7 million is necessary. Given that that may take us a little bit more time, what we could always do is, to the Commissioner's point, if there is some money that becomes available, that would, you know, we'd reduce the contract amount, come back with an amendment to the court, reduce the project in the portfolio, and then the court would be able to take any action about where they'd like to put those additional resources onto any other projects, into the reserve, adding it to the Notice of Funding Opportunity for Nonprofits, that, you know, is something that could potentially work out. Let us just engage with UMC so we can figure out what the timeline might look like to actually bring that back. Given that the court will be making funding decisions for the Notice of Funding Opportunity around the summertime, I do feel confident that we can at least have a timeline in place about what UMC's needs might be by then, and the court would be able to take any appropriate action it wants to at that point.
Thank you.
Judge, Commissioner, I can elaborate also on a couple items. We talked about being in charge. There's an annex, Annex F and Annex R, that talks about particular incidents where it dictates who's in charge, and again, depending on whose district it is in. So we had that already in place. If the court was to approve, let's say, like you had mentioned, Commissioner Alguin, allowing outside agencies to apply for funding, when we apply for Texas Forest Service-
Allowing-
When we apply for Texas Forest Service, they have a ranking structure. They give you a timeline, a date, and they tell you how much funds are available, so we can come up with some type of plan or committee if the court was to allow for that. And then, never had any issues working with other ESDs. OEM has done a phenomenal job with Chief Rodriguez. We work hand-in-hand with him and his staff. And so whenever something does come up, a major incident, you know, we collaborate with each other. And so that is, we're no stranger to that process. And so we are here to assist in any way possible. At the end of the day, it boils down to ultimately, the court is respectfully in charge of both ESDs, and we're here to serve not only the court, but to serve our community.
But Judge, you know, today, we have an item on the agenda for action, and so I think we should take action on that agenda, what we say, what we do down the road as far as including others. That's, we can debate that, come with a plan in regard if we are or we will or will not. But based on the fact that we have an item on the agenda now, I think we should take action therefore.
Yes, I agree, Judge.
In its completeness, or we weren't, I think last time we were talking about-
And I'm not sure if we have to take the item separately, but I would like to go ahead and move to approve the funding for the vaccination clinics in the underserved areas. And then I don't know, I'd also like to move to approve to allow outside entities like the ESDs and any other non-governmental, or non-county entity to apply for those, for that NOFO opportunity. So I don't know if we have to take that separately.
Yeah, that's direction, I think, for the, for the staff right now, because all we're posted on for today is on the request of the allocation to the ESD number one. So that would be a little bit of outside that scope, but definitely the staff can take that direction and add that to the policy, if that's the direction that you all would like to go in and bring it back in terms of a formal adoption of that. So right now, we should probably just keep it to the ask of the ESD number one and what the direction is from the court.
And the motion is the right way, the way it was stated?
Yes. So right now, what I have on the table right now is what I'm hearing from Commissioner Alguin. It would be a motion to approve the allocation for the staffing of those additional clinics. Is that correct? Yes, definitely.
Yeah. Second.
Commissioner Alguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaneseo?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Was there any other items, I guess, on the agenda? So we heard from the ESD number one that you all were withdrawing the request for the sick leave, but I believe there was also the other request in there for the equipment. Was the court going to make a decision on that today in terms of the funding allocation for that?
I thought they were included.
No, the action, it was part of the request, but we took up just the one motion to just do the funding for the additional clinics, but you can certainly add on to that motion if that's what you would like to do in terms of the equipment.
Well, I feel that's very critical and very important in the sense that we, to provide the service, or continue service, or more service and continued service, particularly in light of the pandemic. So I would move to approve that action.
Just one question. Jose, could you carve that out for the public, just what that would entail, just so we can be clear on that particular item, since we carved it out?
Sure. Yes, Judge. So there was, there was three components to the request. One was withdrawn. The previous motion allowed for the vaccination clinic staffing costs to be reimbursed and paid moving forward through a sub-recipient agreement. The last portion is the auto-post capital expenditure request, which is the bulk of the request. It's just about a little over $90,000. And so the, the policy consideration that we wanted to, that we shared with the court was that we have not funded capital expenditure like this for outside agencies where the county doesn't retain some of the ownership back of that equipment or, or it's not internal to the county. And so I believe the court's conversation at that point was determining whether or not this request might be suited for the Notice of Funding Opportunity if other agencies were allowed to apply. But again, that's completely the discretion of the court on how you would like to proceed on that item.
Questions? Any comments on that particular?
I just want to reiterate that I do think that we should allow outside entities to apply for the NOFO, the Notice of Funding Opportunity. I think we should open it up to not only ESD1, but any other outside agency that would like to request funding from the court, some of the ARPA funding from the court.
And although it's a competition, I still feel like we could at least vet, you know, which ones are the priorities. And so then it's not like necessarily that we would take, you know, that they would get the money, right? Because it'd be part of the overall process. And at the end, they might or might not get that. I'm still a little concerned with the amount and also, you know, how it fits into the bigger picture and the demands we have that might be greater. I still, and Jose, just, I still don't have it in the perspective of, in the overall picture, you know, how does it fit into a priority? And I think that's why Commissioner Alguin is saying, if you look at everything, then it makes a little bit more sense. Are you willing to do that, you know, 90,000 here? But is it not taking something away from, from other opportunities that might be more impending?
Well, Judge, when you say priority, life-saving is not a priority?
No, I think they all are. If you ask UMC, they'll tell you, you know, any entity will tell you that they're going to save lives, because that's, we're all doing that. I mean, we're all in this critical situation. And so it's not that you, this one, we're not going to save lives because we don't approve it, because there's 20 other people that are saying the same thing, that they can improve lives and save lives if we gave them a little bit more. So it's just the perspective of where do you think the money should go and so-
One, you're talking about, Judge, you're talking about an organization that provides service based on, the staffing is based on volunteers. It's not like, you know, they have a full staff or personnel that you get paid, and we know they're going to be there, you're talking about volunteers. But the more so thing is, I put, I look at the value that this equipment will provide to the entire community. And I'm confident that utilization of equipment would not be restricted to just ESD1. If it's necessary, needed to provide service, as I was talking about earlier, where we're talking about providing service to the entire community. So we say only those personnel in ESD1 will be able to use that equipment or use it for that, for those personnel, or we say the entire community. So I still strongly that we should support this action. So I, I still strongly that we should, should support this action.
Judge?
Commissioner, Commissioner Leon?
Chief, just a, a quick question. Insofar as that equipment, does the ambulance service that is servicing those areas have that?
No, sir.
They do not have that?
They do not.
See, that, that was the big question I had as I pondered this. Because, uh, I would think that if they did in fact have it, then that would be sort of like a duplication. But it's not.
No, if they did have that, we wouldn't be here today. Overall, it's going to alleviate workload in regards to CPR when it occurs. Limited staffing, um, elongated responses, or, you know, waiting for them to get there. You know, they're pretty good about getting there. The problem is now doing CPR from the time that we're there, getting them to the hospital, and doing good quality CPR. So these devices help us out in that aspect of it. They help us out in preventing, uh, work injuries. They have the means of carrying, uh, the patient out. So they do a multiple or a multitude of different, uh, things besides doing the compressions. Uh, they, they alleviate the, the stress of the, of the provider. We only have three people on the scene having to carry them down the stairs. It's like a, a bag that carries them down. And so I had mentioned last week that, uh, the C O of El Paso utilizes these on their ambulances, and by far, I've used them, uh, three times, and I've had successful outcomes two out of the three times. And so they've saved on back injuries, so they've done a lot. And so we want to protect our firefighters as best we can because they have a livelihood that they do besides volunteering with us. And so what we don't want to happen is one, they get hurt. And so we're always trying to look at different means of, of providing, uh, better equipment so that we minimize the workers' comp claims and minimize the, uh, the injuries that potentially could happen. And so these devices are, um, a very good piece of equipment to have.
Let me ask you this, uh, Chief, if, if an injury occurs at the, towards the east side of the county line, just at the very edge, what is the nearest place where they do in fact have that equipment?
City of El Paso.
So, uh, once you get to, uh, maybe the Horizon Hospital or, uh, Providence East?
Right now, none of the hospitals have them that I'm aware of. I know they've been talking about getting them, um, but right now, the nearest ambulance that would have it would be the City of El Paso ambulance, which would be the Rescue Twenty-Six off of North Loop and Joe Battle, or Rescue Twenty-Nine over off of Pullman and Pelicano, uh, or Rescue Six off of Joe Battle and Maltwood. So those rescues have them, and again, they are City of El Paso. County-wise, no agency has this device. We have responded down in Socorro for CPRs. We've been into Montana Vista. We have MOUs in place or automatic aid agreements in place. When other entities require assistance, we go down there and vice versa. When we require assistance, they come up the hill also. So right now, nobody else in the county has this equipment that we're, I'm aware of in regards to like ambulances, uh, for sure, not, not the ambulances, hospitals. I'm not aware of them having anything, but this will be the first of its kind, uh, in the county.
I appreciate it, and you talked about the training required, uh, last week. Uh, and that was, uh, my teetering point, uh, insofar as, i- if you don't have it, then who else does? So thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good, good questions. Puts things in perspective.
Commissioner Robinson, did you make a?
I moved to approve.
Okay, uh, having heard what I just heard, I was, like I said, I was teetering in that. Uh, I'd have to also second that.
Commissioner Hulgameh?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
I'm voting no because, um, first of all, uh, you know, I, again, I think that there needs to be a process, and this needs to be taken into account, um, with, with, with the bigger picture and, 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 you know, other, other needs, um, that we have. And for example, we have almost four million dollars for constables under public health. You know, there's other, I think, uh, other areas where, where, uh, you know, there, there are needs. And I understand that this is a need, but I'm sure you have a lot, there's probably a lot of equipment that you don't have, um, that a regular fire department has, but that's because, uh, you're, it's a little bit different type of operation. And, and, uh, um, you know, I, I, I just feel like we need to not set a precedent of just coming in and, um, not looking at things with, with the bigger picture. I'm not saying you don't need it. I'm not saying that I wouldn't vote for it in, uh, if, if I knew where the funding was coming from exactly or, or if it was in the bigger context, but I, I have to say no right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Robinson?
I say yes right now.
Judge Samaniego?
Also concerned, uh, just the last comments, um, of not having that accessibility or at least some kind of a support system, so I'll vote aye on that one.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Chief.
We'd like to go ahead and take the items from consent.
Yes, please.
Item four Q, I'll read in four Q and four R together. Item four Q, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the congestion mitigation and air quality non-construction advanced funding agreement and accompanying resolution for the F Y twenty-two El Paso County Regional Transit Startup Assistance Off System Project with the Texas Department of Transportation in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars with a county match of two thousand five hundred dollars. Further approve the transfer in the amount of two thousand five hundred from G F, G Admin Operations Contingencies to G F, B P C M P Operation Expenses General, Contract Number Twenty Twenty-Two Zero Zero Eight-Five. And item four R, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the congestion mitigation and air quality non-construction advanced funding agreement and accompanying resolution for the F Y twenty-three El Paso County Regional Transit Startup Assistance Off System Project with the Texas Department of Transportation in the amount of one million seven hundred ninety-six thousand one hundred seventy dollars with a county match of five thousand six hundred thirteen dollars. Funds will be budgeted in F Y twenty-three, Contract Number Twenty Twenty-Two Zero Zero Eight-Six.
Commissioner?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, oh.
No.
Uh, good morning, Judge, Commissioner Sal Lonzo, uh, Associate Director of Planning and Development. Sorry, Commissioner, go ahead.
No, sorry, Sal, I, uh, I just pulled these items because I, because I wanted to, to, to highlight, I guess, for the, for the community to understand, um, you know, what, what, what exactly we're, we're doing here. And so can, can you just, uh, give us a, a brief, uh, explanation of, of, uh, of these, of these projects?
That, absolutely. Uh, so the first item, uh, is for fiscal year twenty-two of the current fiscal year. Uh, these funds were funds that we secured through the M P O, uh, of, of a few years ago, and this would go towards the startup assistance that is needed for the, uh, local government corporation. As you know, uh, and in November, we, we were able to successfully, uh, create our L G C with the Secretary of State. So now the next phase from here is to be able to, uh, uh, combine our, our resources with the other agencies such as, uh, Vinton, uh, Horizon, and, uh, Sanelli, uh, other agents, municipalities that we serve and we work with as far as our transit program. Uh, the goal from here is to be able to expand our, our, our regional service, uh, in the rural areas, and provide a better, uh, fill in as many gaps that we currently have in our current, uh, transit system. So the funding for twenty-two is money that has been set aside again through the M P O. Uh, the other item is fiscal year twenty-three, uh, which is next fiscal year, which will be, uh, be able to tap in into then. So between the, the funding that we received last year and this, this item before you and the one in twenty-three, uh, we will have enough funding to be able to kind of, um, get this, um, expanded services launched in the, in the first three years. And this would allow other agencies to be able to have, uh, funding, uh, to be able to save up funding, uh, for year four. Uh, after year four, then the, the C M A C money that, that has been identified, the M P O, will, will, will longer be there, obviously, and then we would then, uh, be seeking, uh, all the agencies to contribute to the L G C using either most likely general funds. But the, the startup assistance is, is just, again, just to help, uh, start off the, the, uh, expanded services that we have, uh, ready to, to launch here. Uh, one of the routes being, uh, ready to launch in the upcoming, uh, weeks, uh, which is Route Thirty-One, which would cover the East Lake area, uh, Amazon and, you know, El Paso Community College area. And then the other routes will come in, uh, at a later time. Uh, we're, we're using this first one as a pilot, since this would be our first, um, route that we're going to be launching as far as, uh, the overall, uh, goal for the county.
Thanks, thanks for, for that. I think, you know, this is, this is great news. It's a, it's an important project. Can, can you, can you explain to me what, what the, what, um, the, so this funding source that we're talking about, C M A C, can you, can you talk about what that is, uh, what that is for and how, how, how it is that we are actually able to, to tap into that funding with this type of project?
Uh, sure, absolutely. So, uh, at, at the beginning, uh, about two years ago, maybe a little less than that, um, there was, uh, the R M S twenty-twenty, uh, through the M P O. Uh, we submitted, uh, our, our projects, uh, under transit because we felt that, uh, the category that we secured, which is C M A C, which is the congestion mitigation air quality, um, funding, um, we were able to, to justify a reason why we could secure some additional funding through the M P O for the startup assistance. Uh, this funding, uh, comes from, uh, against the M P O to, through the state. This money, um, from the underneath, uh, from the C M A C allows agencies to use, um, and help, um, keep the air quality low, as you, as, as you can imagine. The goal is, obviously, is how many vehicles we could take off the road, uh, by having better transit, uh, regional, and of course, in the, in the rural areas. Every vehicle that we could get, get off the road, of course, benefits the air quality. So the, the goal of the C M A C, that, and this is just one category, that C M A C. There's different categories that C M A C, uh, funding could also, um, uh, fall under, roundabouts because you're not idling at intersections, you, you keep the, the constant flow, uh, providing, uh, bike lanes because again, the goal is to get, uh, folks off their vehicles, uh, and, and, and reduce the, the footprint of the air quality.
So, so, so then it's, uh, I guess the goal is to get, get people out of their cars and, and, and reduce, uh, vehicle miles traveled. That's, that's one of the reasons why we're doing this project, right? And, and why we're able to get that funding?
That, that is correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to, to note that, um, currently, the, the M P O, the Transportation Policy Board is in a public comment period for its T I P and its, and the M T P and conformity documents, um, which all assume huge increases in, in vehicles, vehicle miles traveled and proposed, uh, proposed for the most part, uh, building more roads, including the expansion of I-ten. Um, and I know that we'll, we'll discuss it in greater detail on Thursday in our special meeting, when the consultants report on, on our, on their preliminary findings related to the traffic modeling on, modeling on I-ten. But I wanted to, 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 you know, ask, um, you know, why, why is it important to reduce vehicle miles traveled? And if, and if it's important to reduce, uh, vehicles, vehicle miles traveled, why does the region only have these relatively small programs to address that? With the vast majority of the M P O, T I P plans geared toward, uh, projects that increase vehicle miles traveled?
Right, if I could just add a little bit more to that, Commissioner. So, so C M A C is, is a funding category at the M P O that all agencies are, could go after. However, in, in, in recent years, uh, C M A C funding in particular has been a little bit hard to come by, uh, across the state. Couple of years ago, when San Antonio went into, uh, non-entainment, uh, that was another city that now took a share of the available C M A C funding. So the C M A C funding never increased, uh, because San Antonio became a non-entainment. All it is, is there was more people to share the pie. Um, so these monies, uh, the, the funding that we secured, uh, we fought at, at the M P O, uh, and we were able to work with, with Taxod M P O to be able to, to provide funding for transit. One of the items that we like to do in the county, uh, as, as long as, you know, other agencies, uh, including Taxod and, and of course, the City of El Paso, is we try to do multimodal, um, projects to be able to provide alternative means of transportation. And at the end of the day, that, that's, that's our goal, eh, to get more people off of the vehicles and, and into a different type of modes of transportation, whether it's transit, bikes, uh, walking, and so forth. Uh, not, not to say that we're going to eliminate all the vehicles in the road, but, um, the goal is to reduce as many vehicles as, if possible.
Yeah, I just, I just think it's, it's good, uh, food for thought for, for, um, those members from the, the Commissioners Court that serve on the M P O, a- as well as, um, any other representation that we have on the M P O. Um, I, I really think that we should keep in mind that, that we, we should prioritize reducing V M T, vehicle miles traveled. And, uh, you know, as we're going through this comment period for the T I P and the M T P and, uh, and, and push for, um, reduction in, in, like, you know, congestion as well as pollution and, and which, which will allow us to, to possibly bring in more of, more of this C M A C funding. But, um, I appreciate the, the, uh, the explanation, Sal and, and Jose. I think that, um, this is exciting, exciting project for, uh, for, uh, people that use transit in El Paso County. Any, any, uh, movement, uh, when it comes to, uh, working with Sun Metro to, uh, streamline the, the riding fees and the, and the process to, for, for folks to, to be able to ride seamlessly from outside of the county to, for example, the city's core?
Uh, yes, sir, Commissioner. The conversations have, 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 have started even when we were started creating the L G C with Sun Metro. Uh, so the channels are there. Uh, I know Sun Metro, um, during his, his, um, operations transfer, uh, kind of took a step back so they could identify, uh, how they were, were going to move forward after their contract with First Transit ended. But since then, I know the channels have been open, uh, back up with, with Sun Metro in the hopes to be able to provide, like you're saying, a seamless regional transportation. That is the county's ultimate goal. That is what the feasibility study that we did almost five years ago, um, it was going to help us get there. Uh, we feel that we've, we've taken a lot of, uh, information from this feasibility study that, that was done by our partners at T T I. We didn't want that type of report or research to just, you know, be left on the shelves. We ended up taking a lot of the information, extracting the, uh, different scenarios, and I'm happy to say that, you know, with the L G C already in place and, and meetings that we're about to have, uh, next, uh, first meeting next week, and then being able to start getting all these contracts with all the other agencies so we could start, uh, leasing some of these, uh, additional routes to be able to cover more areas. I, I, I think that, that's, that's an exciting time, uh, for the county transit as well as, uh, concurrently working on placing more passenger shelters, uh, for the public. Uh, as you know, the county currently does not have any shelters, but that will change here in the near future with local dollars that we receive from the court, uh, from the C I P, and then of course, the funding that we were secured through Taxod. So overall, we're, I, we feel that we, we are moving in the right direction to, at one point, be able to have one seamless transportation, uh, for the, the entire region. And that's with, uh, including our partners with Sun Metro.
Thank you. Yeah, the, the creation of the L G C is, is good news, so good, good, strong leadership from the county. And, and for those of us who, who can, who can bend somebody's ear at the city and Sun Metro to, to push for those, uh, for that seamless transfer, let's keep advocating for that and, and hopefully we'll be able to see that come to fruition.
You want to go ahead and comment, please?
Yes, uh, good morning, Judge, Commissioners, Hopeton State Public Fleet Operations Director. There's one thing I want to add to that, that Sal may not have highlighted, that maybe about three years ago, we started off with replacing most of our transit buses with, uh, C N G buses. Uh, we started off with two, and, and now about half the fleet is, uh, C N G, which is far greater, uh, emission reduction than gasoline or diesel. I believe we have thirty-two buses in the active fleet right now, and fifteen of them are, uh, C N G buses. So the goal again is to replace the other fifteen with, uh, compressed natural gas, which, which again is far less, uh, emission and pollution. So, so that's also a good news story for the, uh, transit program.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you, Hopeton.
Judge?
Yes, Commissioner.
Hopeton, before you sit down, I, I just wanted to, to add something. And looking at the infrastructure bill coming down the tubes, uh, there, there's a lot of funding, apparent funding for, uh, public transportation in which, uh, the entity has taken steps into reducing the carbon footprint, compressed, uh, gas, electric buses. So if, I know that my staff is looking at the possibility of, uh, of using that takeoff point, which you just mentioned, we have fifteen buses and we have fifteen to go, that there is, uh, more funding available for, uh, units like us that are trying to get to that, uh, lesser, uh, carbon footprint. And I, and I encourage you to keep, keep fighting for that, and that someday maybe we'll have our own. and that someday maybe we'll have our own compressed air station that they can come to.
Correct, Commissioner. Actually, the, the funding for the buses obviously is through transit, but we're also working with another program with Jose's office and Norma, looking at getting some infrastructure for fast charging station to, to be able to go electric. Because again, electric is, is where the world is transitioning to. At first it was gas, diesel, CNG. Now everything is kind of switching towards electric. So we're looking at all options.
Good. I'm, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move to approve all three items?
Second.
I had read in just for Q and R.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so we'll, we'll move to approve Q and R and then if you want to read in, as we can do that.
He's pre-making a motion.
I'm sorry, and who's second? Second. Commissioner Olguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson is absent. Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Hey Sal, I want to thank you. It was a great, very succinct explanation. Very well done, Sal. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate it.
Item 4S, approve and authorize the county judge to sign task order number two, El Paso County Urban and Rural Reporting Financial Analysis with the Texas A&amp;M Transportation Institute in the amount of $37,426. Funding is available in General Fund EPCMP Professional Services General, contract number 20220087.
Move to approve.
Good morning Judge, Commissioner Sal Alonzo, Associate Director of Planning Development. This item before you is a task order that we have with TTI. If you recall, a few, about a year ago, the MPO came up with a finding that local agencies that provide transit could apply and, and receive 5307 funds through, through Sun Metro. The MPO did a study to determine agencies that are eligible. We were one of those agencies that qualified to, to apply for 5307, 5307 funds or report. However, we currently in our transit program have only been reporting 5311 vehicle mileage. The analysis we're asking, I'm sorry, one second, I'm sorry. My apologies. The task that we asked TTI to do, perform is to be able to help determine whether the county benefited from reporting 5307 and, and, and not only report 5311 funds. At the end of the day, I just want to make sure that if we are reporting the 5307 funds, at the end of the day, I want to make sure that we are receiving every, every cent that we could possibly get. I don't, I don't want it for us to be shortchanged as far as reporting, because when you report 5307 vehicle miles, that obviously reduces the 5311 mileage that we report. So this task that TTI is going to do is be able to lay out a plan on saying, county, if you report 5307, including 5311, this is the amount of money that you, you're eligible to receive. And give me the pros and cons. And, and the hope is the, the study provides us enough information to be able to make that call. I know, Judge, we had reached out to your office to, to send out a letter to the MPO, but prior to that, we just want to make sure that we were doing our due diligence because once we start reporting, I, I didn't want to, again, at the end of the day, have less money by just reporting 5311 funds if we were to report 5307 funding.
Thank you, Sal.
So I, I, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you may have as well.
Thank you, Sal.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Olguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you both.
Judge and Commissioners, I'd like to share this really quick. There are a lot of exciting things coming in transit. A lot of pilot programs to include ED, possible, or, or facility that we so need. So a lot of things are coming in the horizons. I just want to share that, you know, it's a very exciting time for El Paso County Transit as we're moving forward. Thank you.
Long overdue, but thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 10, purchasing. Approve the purchase of three Chevrolet Tahoe PPV patrol utility vehicles, one mechanic's truck with service body and one Ford F-250 four by four for the county of El Paso, Texas, using goodbye contract 22-228F000 awarded to Salisbury Ford, Inc. of Salisbury, Texas, in the amount of $38,345 and Lake Country Chevrolet of Jasper, Texas, in the amount of $265,807.75 for a grand total of 300, 300,000, correction, 304,152.75. Purchasing approved on February 2nd, 2022. Funding is available on SG ARP, AR Plan 21 cap outlays. CP replaced 22 Fleet Operation Vehicle 1. General Fund Fleet Operation Cap Out Vehicles.
Good morning Judge, good morning Commissioners, Karen Davidson, County Purchasing Agent. We're asking on item 10 for your approval to purchase the three Chevy Tahoe vehicles, patrol unit vehicle for Constable Precinct 3, 5 and 7. The one mechanic's truck with the service body, and that would be for Fleet Ops. And the Ford F-250 four by four, which would be for public boards. They are being purchased off two separate cooperatives. The four Chevy vehicles are coming out of Lake Country Chevy in Jasper, Texas, and the last Ford F-250 is coming from our Salisbury Ford cooperative. So it is a request for a total of 304, 152.75. And I'm here to answer any questions as well as my colleague Hope and Staple for Fleet.
Thank you, Karen. Commissioner Leon?
Just one quick question, Ms. Davidson. And maybe we can get it incorporated into these agenda items. How much we pay the buy boards or the co-ops insofar as administrative fees? I know I, I asked about this a couple of weeks ago, but can you carve out the amounts that actually go to the fees we pay for using the, the buy boards or the co-ops? If any?
Yes, yes, Commissioner, we certainly can. As Mr. Staple had presented to you before, he does try to put all of the vehicles that he's going to buy from Salisbury Ford or from Lake Country Chevy under one purchase order so that it's only one cost for administration. It is around $300 or $400 based on the price. But we absolutely can make sure we put that on items as we go forward. That was what the court would like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Karen.
Was there a motion to? Oh, I, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Olguin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Item number 11, Judiciary and Corrections. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the first amendment to the interlocal agreement for the provision of multi-systemic therapy services between El Paso County and El Paso MHMR, doing business as Emergence Health Network for children and adolescents under the care of a referring agency and who may be candidates for mental health therapy from October 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2022, with two one-year options to renew in an amount not to exceed $238,425. Funding is available in General Fund JPD Professional Services General and SRJPD SUP Professional Services General, contract number 20220024.
Good morning Judge, Commissioners. My name is Janelle Morgan and I'm the Director of Probation Services at the El Paso County Juvenile Probation Department. The item we have before you is an interlocal between the Juvenile Probation Department and Emergence Health Network for MST or Multi-Systemic Therapy Services. MST Services is an evidence-based program that works with the drivers to delinquent behavior in order to address those issues and prevent recidivism. The amendment in this case is just a change or a, there was an error in the amounts. So there was two amounts listed on the contract that were different and they just corrected it and made it consistent. Do the amendment.
Thank you, Janelle.
Your approval. Do you have any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Janelle.
Item number 12, Health and Social Services. Discuss and take appropriate action on updating the previously approved county policy regarding the disbursement of emergency rental assistance funds.
Welcome, Irene.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning, Judge Commissioners, Irene Malenzuela with Community Services Department. The item before you is asking your reconsideration of an early policy from 2021 when we first brought to you the advent of funds received from the U.S. Treasury for our emergency rental assistance phase ones funds. At that time, the court approved restricting our county funds to only residents that reside outside the city limits of El Paso, given that the city of El Paso had received their own allocation from the U.S. Treasury as well, at the same time that we received ours. And so that policy was put in place so that we can focus on providing rental and utility assistance to residents outside the city of El Paso. We've been distributing funds since that time, through the summer, through this last year as well. Those expenditure rates have not been as hoped and expected. We've had a couple of presentations to the court in between. We have changed or recommended changing your policy since. In those early days too, you also allowed for a cap of six months assistance. You then went back and, and updated that as well and extended that rental assistance to 12 months plus three future months as the Treasury approves. And so we're here today asking you to update that policy once again to allow our portal to open, to make those funds available to city residents. We've recently met with the city of El Paso. They've expressed to us that in the recent weeks, they've committed, if not all their funding, but most of their funding already and pledged it to several residents who have applied within the city limits of El Paso. And we understand that they may still have more households in the pipeline that may require assistance beyond what their funds currently are. And so in order for us to fill this gap within the city of El Paso, we're requesting that you allow us to open our porters to city residents so that we can able to fill that gap inside the city.
Judge, and Commissioners, we also had, I think Irene mentioned this, but Jacob Miles, who's here with us today, did, did some analysis on it and, and he's available to answer questions as well. As we sent out in the highlight regarding what some of the obstacles may be for county residents from any data that he could dig into, the census data and our current distribution data and, and, and resident data and to try to make some sort of projection for us to help inform us from a data-driven perspective. So Jacob's here, if you have questions on that. And as Irene mentioned, the Phase 2, we have several years to distribute that and, and several million dollars and hopefully more. And we could keep that to county residents. We just want to make sure that we utilize these Phase 1 funds within these strict timelines within the, within the El Paso region. So, so if you have any questions at all for Jacob, if you're ever able to take a look at that, he's here as well. So I just wanted to add that.
And just, I, I wanted to express that, and Joel and I talked about it this morning, is that I, I would feel very uncomfortable if we didn't exhaust everything that we needed to do. We give it to the city and then we find out that we really hadn't communicated properly. And, and so I, I just want to make sure that we really, really had gone to a point of, that we've exhausted. You know, I talked to Cindy Ramos and about maybe the small businesses in these areas, that their workers are probably the, the most likely to be having difficulties because of their pay. And so she's willing to, to sort of get that word out there through the small businesses. And, and I think that's another avenue. I think us as Commissioners and myself, you know, I said that we needed, I needed a shift a little bit more. It's been all about the pandemic, but we haven't really stepped out there and taken advantage of our, of our exposure and ability to reach out to people through, to the media. And so that's the only, where I'm uncomfortable that we would move too quickly and do that without really knowing that we exhausted what we were going to do for the county. So anyways, my points and Commissioner Olguin and then Commissioner Leon?
Thank you, Judge. Um, so I did have just a couple of questions, Irene, and, and just to make sure I understand. So I, definitely, if we have need within the city and funds aren't being expected at the county to the extent that we hope that they would be, then of course, we should do what we can to make sure that funds don't have to be returned to the federal government, but stay within our community. So I'm in favor of that. And I actually want to thank City Representative Cassandra Hernandez. She's the one that reached out to us last week when she discovered that the city was potentially on the verge of not having any funds left. So I want to thank her for bringing that to our attention. But I do have some questions about, well, well first, I guess, just to reiterate. So we, we would still maintain funds for our county residents, correct, Irene? It would be maybe, as I understand, as the city needs help because they're running out of funds. But we're not talking about using it all towards, giving it all towards the city, correct? We'd still be maintaining a healthy sum from what we think our county residents are going to need. Is that correct?
But we would still carve out, right? We'd carve out a little bit that would be going to the county, right?
So, so we have funds, we have a fund balance left for, within our ERA Phase 1 funds. And, but we have unexpended funds from ERA Phase 2, which are about $3.5 million. Those don't expire until four years down the line. ERA Phase 1 funds expire this year at the end of September. And so while I did put this in my backup, asking the court to also consider ERA Phase 2 to open to the city, but what we can do is open ERA Phase 1 funds, which we, we do have a balance that's unexpended in the county, to this need that is still, as we understand, there's a demand still in the city. And open that up. And we can maintain our ERA 2 funds, which is $3.5 million right now. And we have four years to expend those. We can still maintain those for county residents only if you would like that, Judge Commissioners. And then that gives us more time to push that money out. These first phase funds, our funds expire in about eight months at this point. And so like Commissioner Olguin said, in order to ensure that these funds stay within our region, my recommendation would be to open those to the city. We're not giving them to the city of El Paso. They stay within the county's fund. They're ours. We still continue to work to distribute them from the county. But we just opened the portal, allowing city residents to apply. The portal is through the Paso del Norte Community Foundation, who's administering both city and county. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be much to just make a policy decision, actually, just to open it to city residents. And it would only be for those ERA Phase 1 funds.
Okay, Commissioner Leon?
Thank you, Judge. I couldn't agree more with what Commissioner Olguin had just said. And I just wanted to dovetail on what the judge said insofar as getting the word out. I know that in, in my circle, I, I don't see too much advertising, that the money is there. And I know that, maybe Commissioner Stout would know better than I do, that in advertising TV and print, there's certain amount that they have to give to nonprofits, us being one, that we just haven't gotten the, the word out enough. And if we have to use some other funds to get advertising on TV and Spanish and English, that we got to do it. I think that's so necessary because if, if I was in that type of situation, I really have not seen anything that directs me, hey, I can call this number and they can help me. And I, I made this point last week, or I try to make it, that even though some people are paying their rent and their leases on time, but they're suffering in other places. You know, they're doing without medicine, without food. That if we can incorporate this into some sort of ad, and Irene, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to hear what you're saying. But I, I think that we're, we're not reaching the, the main group that we're, we're looking for because they, they just don't know.
Yeah, Commissioner Robinson?
I kind of have to agree with you because my standpoint is during the holiday, during Thanksgiving and Christmas, we were out in the county, and we've been doing this for a number of years. But we gave out, in one day, we gave out over 200 food baskets, to include turkeys. And the lines were just enormous. So what we're saying is that I know there's a need out there, but part of what you said, but one, people sacrifice, one, to pay rent or to buy food. So you look at the lines that we had in Benton, just for giving out food to those needy people out there. I know somehow we're missing the boat for getting more communication. Because when we advertise, they were giving out food, giving out food baskets, the lines are there. So I'd like to think that there are people that need rental assistance, but somehow maybe they're not getting the word. Maybe the communication method that we're using could be better. So let's do what we can to try to get the word out.
Irene, you were going to comment?
No, no. Yes, just briefly. Part of what's been done so far, there has been some coverage from all the news media, English and Spanish. There's been a lot of online coverage. Our very own Reduce the Risk campaign that you all supported and paid for under Carriage and ARPA funds has also done quite a bit of outreach. There has been commercials that have come out as well, that were done through this process. Some marketing that has been done under this funding source. You know, I have been interviewed several times from Spanish and English media. My team has done a lot of grassroots efforts out in the county as well. We've been passing out thousands of flyers. We've had pop-up events at some of our county facilities as well. There's been a lot of social media postings as well. And I understand that may not be the primary source that our county residents may get their information from. So there has been some grassroots efforts that have done. We have partnered with other agencies to help us do some of that outreach in the county as well. And so we could definitely continue to do more. I do support that, Commissioners, that we can possibly continue to expand this process. And so I guess the item before you is whether you want to open that portal just for the ERA Phase 1, which there's an existing balance. And if you would like to keep our efforts to restriction only county residents for our ERA Phase 2, which is still an unexpendable balance, and that that actually has an expiration date that is much further down the line than ERA Phase 1.
Jacob, you want to go ahead and tell us a little bit about your findings?
Thank you, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Jacob Miles with County Administration. So to this direct point that we're talking about right now in terms of getting that money expended on a timely matter, our current average for monthly payments is a little under $143,000. If we keep that up in perpetuity, you would get only 1.3 million by September 2022, which is a deadline for this first 2.5 million. So we would have to get double what we're currently averaging, and we had to have done that starting last month. If we do that, then we can get to the 2.5 million target by September 2022. Even if we get 50% more than what we're doing now, that still wouldn't get us there. Only double of what we're averaging right now would get us to that target for this first batch of 2.5 million.
Great observation.
No, yeah. If I could just clarify one thing, Judge, really quickly, and thank you for all the information, Jacob. It was incredibly helpful and helped to put everything in perspective. I would like to limit this discussion just to the Phase 1 funds that we know have an expiration date that's going to be coming up really, really, really quickly. And again, just making sure that we don't have to return any funds to the federal government. We want to make sure that these funds stay here in our community. But I know that for the ERA Phase 2, going to Commissioner Robinson's point, Commissioner Leon's point about doing more to really make sure the word gets out. I know for ERA Phase 2, we're looking at partnering with nonprofit agencies that are actually on the ground in these communities, have strong ties to the residents of these communities, because we think that that's going to help spread the word better and help us distribute more of these funds better. I just want to make sure, Irene, that strategy hasn't changed, right? The ERA Phase 1, if we open up the portal, we're going to keep working with Paso del Norte because they're the ones that are doing it now for both the city and the county. But for ERA Phase 2, we're still going to be moving forward with this strategy of working more with local nonprofits in some of these unincorporated areas to help make sure that the funds, the word about the funds and the funds themselves get dispersed. Correct?
We can continue on that track, correct, Commissioner Olgin. In the backup of your item, I did open up that option. If you all wanted to extend the same opening of the portal to city residents to ERA Phase 2, but if your wish is to continue for us to work on expanding that to only county residents, that's the ERA Phase 2, we can isolate this conversation and this discussion and your approval to just the Phase 1.
Yeah, Jacob?
And we can continue having those discussions with those nonprofits so that we can expand ERA Phase 2 in a different grassroots approach.
Okay. A quick comment, and then I'll have Commissioner Stout. If you look at the city and how they're doing, and we gave them that money, does the formula also work that they'll be able to exhaust the money we give them?
I would have to see what their numbers are. I was only provided the Al County's numbers. Based on the proportion of actual rental units that are in the city compared to the county, and based on a number of other factors that we looked at in the analysis, I would anticipate that we could get double of what we're doing at this point, and therefore reach our target of 2.5 million by September.
Yeah, that's important because if we're passing it on, just to pass it on. So Commissioner Stout?
Yep. So my thoughts are, I mean, I think you make a good point, Jacob, is that there's that's right. And so definitely want to make sure that, you know, we expend the Phase 1 money as we can in the city. But I don't want to exclude people who may need the assistance from Phase 2 as well. Is the city, the city has Phase 2 money that they can expend within the city limits? It just seems to me that there's a lot of need, right? Because they ran out of their money in Phase 1. It seems to me that like they may run out of their money in Phase 2 as well. And I've said it before, and I'll say it again, some of the most needy neighborhoods are within precinct 2, south of I-10. And, you know, so I don't want to exclude them from being able to tap into our funding as well if that's needed. So is it, is it, is it a bad idea to, I guess, wait? I mean, are we proposing waiting again until the city expends all of their funding? And then once their funding is out, then we have to come back and make a decision to say the county can start, can open up the portal to people within the city limits? Or can we, or can we just do that? Because it seems like there's a need. And instead of, you know, sitting on the money and not getting it out, and I think that, you know, there's only so much we can do to advertise. I mean, I think we've done a lot, and we can do more, of course. But it may just be that the need is in a different part of the county, right? And so I don't want to preclude members and, for example, the people that live within the district that I, precinct I represent, from being able to tap into county funding, because they're county taxpayers as well.
Commissioner?
Commissioner, but?
Yeah.
I guess the question I have in that regard, is there a reason why, do you have any idea why the number of people in the county are not applying for rental assistance? Do you have any, excuse me, indication there, too? My question is, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure. Was your question for me, Commissioner, or for Jacob?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
For you, Irene.
Okay. Well, there's several factors. And I think that a lot of those were derived from the data analysis that Jacob did. There's a much smaller proportion in the county of renters versus homeowners. We have a smaller percentage of population in the county. We had over $4.7 million dedicated for only Al County residents, and we have about 250,000 in population, about 40,000 households. Only 70, I beg your pardon, only about 20% of those households are renters. So there's that factor, the smaller population, the lower proportion of renters. And then there's some factors that Jacob really looked into, dealing with unemployment. Many of the industries that our county residents are employed in are industries that were considered essential, essential positions such as transportation, construction. None of those, while they were affected by COVID, none of them had as big of an impact as other industries within the city that had to close down and had to experience high rates of unemployment. And so we think that these are some factors that have affected that, that folks just maybe did not have a need to provide, to pay rent as much as city residents did. And so those are some of the factors that we think, just by looking at some of the data that Jacob was able to evaluate.
And we had the lines of people that are coming for food. That's the indication to me that they're needing, maybe they are paying their rent, maybe they don't need, maybe some of those don't need rental assistance. But I know they need, they need to feed their family. So they'll provide for their family. So let me try this. Maybe the boots on the ground, as far as, we have a considerable number of neighborhood associations within our county areas. So maybe if we reach out to the neighborhood association and get more direct contact with the people that need the assistance, maybe we can up those numbers. So the flyers that you have, that you pass out, how are they distributed?
We've done flyers at the food lines, actually. I'm glad you mentioned that, Commissioner Robinson. We've passed out flyers at food lines. We've used our very own centers in the Al County areas of Fabens, Montana Vista, Aguadulce, Cano Tío Centers to pass out those flyers. We had a county staffer posted at a utility payment agency to pass out information in Fabens. And so she was there for months at a time to promote this program. Like I said, our very own Reduce the Risk campaign that enlists promotoras to pass out information about this did that as well. And so, oh, we passed out flyers at churches, at community churches and neighborhood churches out in the county. They made Sunday announcements about this rent assistance program in the Al County areas. Again, there's been a lot of news stories focused on this rental program as well to push out this information. And we're not saying there's no need, Commissioner. There is a need in the county. There definitely is a need. I think what we're seeing, especially in the data that Jacob pulled up and analyzed, I'm not sure that there's a need for rent as much as there is in the city. And so I think that there's other needs. For example, we're seeing a huge increase in requests for mortgage assistance through our very own general assistance. We have helped, our increase in rental, bigger part mortgage requests in general assistance are over 800% than in the past two years. And we have, we have paid more than 800% more in mortgage than we have in any other time in general assistance. So, and that's also city, but a lot of it is also county. We have a lot of homeowners in the county where we cover also land payments, mobile home mortgage payments. So a lot of that we've covered under that. So we're seeing different kinds of needs. I'm not sure that, you know, the data indicates that there's a lot of rent need. But we have seen it kind of shoot through the roof in the city over this last month, is what we're told. And then one of the comments I wanted to make after Commissioner Stout mentioned was that it's our understanding from our meeting with the city that they have enough commitments as well in the pipeline and pledged to be able to expend their Phase 2 funds as well. And so that's my understanding from our meeting that we had with city staff on February 9th.
Just based off of what some of the data that we're seeing and some of the comments made by our staff right now, I think it would be a good idea to allow the portal open for Phase 2 for city residents as well. It just seems like there's need there as well that we can help take care of.
I'm not opposed to opening the portal for Phase 2 as well. I certainly agree that there is need. I just feel like that we have a little bit more time to kind of deal with that issue. What worries me is the Phase 1 funds. We've already had to return a small amount of those funds. And so I want to make sure that we're not losing an opportunity to continue to helping the residents of El Paso County, even if they do live within the city. I just want to make sure that we do give a chance to these nonprofit organizations that are going to have boots on the ground, that are going to try dispersing the money to the county residents, where we know, like Commissioner Robin said, we know there's a tremendous need still in the county. I want to make sure that we're giving them a chance to really do some of that outreach that maybe wasn't done in the best way possible previously. So I don't, I don't see a problem with maybe holding off on the Phase 2 funds until we flesh out that strategy a little bit more with the nonprofits that are going to be on the ground. Maybe we can identify others than what have already been identified. But for me, the priority right now is the Phase 1 funds, because we definitely don't want to find ourselves in a situation where we're having to return any of that money when we know that our citizens in El Paso can use it.
I too agree. And then I want to make sure on that second face that, you know, we understand what we can and, you know, our opportunity. And if we find ourselves in the same situation, that it's not moving that fast, we could always pass that. So I'd like to support that as well.
Yeah, I think that's, those are, those are good points. I just, I just don't want to have a situation where, you know, we're waiting to try to go search out somebody in the county area while there's somebody that's, that could be using the money right now. And, you know, they're at risk of becoming homeless, and we're not helping them because we're trying to search, like, for people that may not be there.
And I hope, Irene, that the city staff, when you spoke to them, understood that they should always feel that they can come to us if they need that help. I, as I mentioned, I heard it from Representative Hernandez, when she was hearing from her constituents that they were being told that the city had no more funds. And I understand, Irene, that you had reached out to them several months ago, and they hadn't expressed a need. But I hope that now they do understand that they can always reach out to us. I mean, yes, definitely. We don't want to hold off on the decision about ERA Phase 2 to the point where folks aren't getting the help that they need. But I'd like to have the city come to us and know that they can come to us whenever they need that help so that the court can then make those decisions.
So you want to make a motion on that?
Yes. So I would make a motion to open up the ERA Phase 1 portal to the city, to residents of the city, and then come back to the discussions about ERA Phase 2 as we hear about a need, further need from the city, so that we can give the opportunity to the nonprofits that we're talking to about making sure that word gets out into the county for ERA Phase 2.
Second.
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
I'm going to have to vote no, because I do think that we should open Phase 2 immediately, and also do outreach in areas like my precinct, so that people understand that the county has money as well. I'm pretty sure, after hearing the comments of our staff, that the data is showing that there is more need within the city limits and that the city is going to run out of their money. It's been, it's been dedicated. And so I see no reason why we should, why we should wait. And so I have to vote no. Thank you.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
If I could just add one item, please. So the court, just right now, your action was on the policy direction in terms of how you would like to appropriate those Phase 1 fundings and what the plan is going forward with Phase 2. My understanding, and Ms. Valenzuela, if you could please clarify, is that there'll need to be an amendment to the agreement with Paso del Norte for their efforts. And so what we'll do is we'll work on that, bring it back to the court's attention at your next meeting, which is February the 28th. However, that does not mean that you all can proceed with the efforts and the decision that the court was made today.
and the decision that the court was made today. We'll just backdate that contract. And of course, we have the oral, the oral affirmation of the court on the record that you can relay back to the organization so they can start those efforts.
Thank you, Christina.
But just wanted to let the court know. Thank you.
Yes, we want to make those funds available to the folks that need it as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Irene.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Item number 13, grant applications. Approve the submission of county grant applications as listed and described. If awarded, all grant award agreements will be brought back to the commissioner's court for final acceptance and approval. And we do have a correction to read in for item 13. Approve and authorize County Criminal Court Number Four Domestic Violence Treatment Program to apply for the Office of the Governor FY23 Specialty Courts Program Grant in the amount of $275,353 from October 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2023. No county match is required. Further authorize the county judge to sign the accompanying resolution, contract number 20220123.
Good morning.
Good, Judge.
Commissioners, Judge. So I'm here to request approval to apply for this grant in the amount of $275,353. That includes three positions. To manage the grant and the court programs would be a specialty court coordinator, a licensed mental health counselor, licensed professional counselor, and a surveillance officer. It also includes funding for equipment for those three employees and software programs that would be used to assist the participants of the program. I'm here to answer any other questions you may have.
The, just on, we talked, we spoke about, you know, after the grant is over and, you know, having to take that on in our budget. Have you, any thoughts on that? Or, you know, how likely would it be a continuation of the grant or?
So my understanding is that the reason that there's more funding available right now for specialty court programs is that last year legislation was passed to include a 1% tax on alcoholic beverage sales. That would be specifically earmarked for specialty court programs. So you can imagine, I think I was talking to Judge Antrona about this, who told me that currently that pot is over $10 million. And so I don't necessarily think that they would run out of funding. If they would, I know that I've also spoken to him. He's had a very successful program of his own. So looking to sort of combine efforts between both of our programs in the future, depending on how it goes.
Well, great, great benchmark. And I love the synergism that you guys share. So move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
And Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Judges.
Item number 14, approve and authorize the Public Defender's Office to apply for the Texas Indigenous Defense Commission FY2223 Indigenous Defense Improvement Grant Program to address the pandemic-related backlogs. And I apologize, this does have a correction as well. In the amount of $2,813,475 from February 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2023. Further authorize the county judge to sign the resolution and electronic submission form. No county match is required. Contract number 20220130.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Kelly Childress from the Public Defender's Office. Excuse me. This is our request to apply for grant funding through the Texas Indigenous Defense Commission, who's received a substantial amount of ARPA dollars to hand out for the purposes of eliminating COVID backlogs. While we don't have an enormous backlog in case numbers, we have a very large backlog in trials. So we are seeking permission to apply for this grant. It is not, it does not require matching funds, and they are positions that will expire after we hopefully eliminate the backlog. The anticipated timeframe is two years, and we could potentially qualify for a third year later on.
Thank you. Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Judge and Commissioners, if we could jump back to item number seven. Jose's requested before lunch to do a small budget amendment for something related to fleet and the constable vehicles. That be okay?
No.
Please have a motion to reconsider item number seven.
A move. Second.
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. And item number seven, receive a report and discuss and take appropriate action regarding the CARES Act Grant, the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act 2021, and the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, and County Administration. This request is to authorize an amendment of $4,100 from, let me pull up the exact account here. To cover some increased equipment costs that are associated with the constable vehicles that the court has approved funding for already. Between the time that the bids have, the bid prices were requested through the requisition and through just normal time to actually begin to purchase these goods, quotes have gone up. The auto industry is very volatile, volatile right now, and fleet is experiencing some pretty unprecedented changes in pricing that makes it a little hard to make sure that things move along. And so with that said, there is some equipment that is needed for the actual equipping of the patrol units for the constables for precincts. One, three, excuse me, for precincts three, five, and seven. So collectively, it's approximately $4,100. And we would request that the court authorize a budget amendment and transfer of funding in the amount of $4,100 from project 1560 into project 1050 specifically for this additional vehicle equipment. Available to take any questions that the court may have.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
And Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Sir.
Item number 15, budget and finance. Approve and authorize the reallocation of capital funds in the amount of $1,874. Correction, $1,874,950 to allow for the additional funds needed for the renovation at the downtown annex. Further approve the reallocation of funding from CP, CP Capital 12 Miscellaneous, CP, CP County Cap 12 Renovations, CP, CP ER PS FT WR 12 IT Software, and CP, CPT GPOE 12 Construction to CP Downtown Building Renovation and CP Downtown Building FNF.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Disco Policy. As noted on your weekly agenda briefing you received from county administration last week, during the demolition phase of the project, it was discovered that some window framing contained hazardous materials and needed to remove that building in hazardous materials. We were presented with an option to replace all exterior windows and frames. The option did come with some cost impacts, but we'll prove to provide savings in energy efficiency in the future as well as safety of the staff by removing these hazardous materials. Additionally, we're requesting to include a countywide access control system, which is our proximity card readers that we have similar in the courthouse, and the voice over internet protocol, the VoIP system. It's for our telephony system to include features available at the downtown annex. Those systems are being installed in other county facilities. And during, doing this during the remodel would save in operating and efficiency cost. Additionally, the cost optimization can be achieved by avoiding the recurring costs associated with the building-to-building fiber connections. County administration did recommend including this moderate one-time cost to own the circuits as opposed to leasing these with a cost recovery period of about one year. Additionally, about $300,000 of this impact is related to pricing for the furniture that has increased as well recently, similar to what you're seeing in the auto industry and most every other industry going on right now. With that, we would ask for your favorable consideration and ask for your approval.
Thank you, Wally.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Oggy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a great afternoon, everyone.
Thank you, Wally. Likewise.
Judge, Dr. O did confirm he's ready for at 1:00.
At 1:00?
If we want to go with that.
Excellent.
Would you like to go ahead and recess at this time?
Yes.
Commissioners' court will recess for one hour?
What's your pleasure? The full hour?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
It is 12:00 PM. We will return at 1:00 PM. It is 12:00 PM. We will return at 1:00 PM.
We stocked the lake on Thursday.
1,528 all rainbow trout.
Kept the lake closed till this morning. Today, we have our winter trout reeling.
You just rub garlic down the tail. Well, you put it starting at the head, just rub it down the tail.
Right now, we're using the fake worms. You try to replicate whatever they'll naturally eat.
We had 52 pre-registrations, and this morning, we had another 25.
There's a lot of people out today, so it's pretty neat to have a lot of people come out.
Just a couple of nibbles, that's it. But nothing yet. Just down, just practically putting it in a little ball, just to put it right here on this triple hook.
Wait here for two hours, and then that one second of catching a fish, man, like, there's nothing that beats the thrill. So hoping to get more.
This is a family event, just to kind of have fun. That's it. We catch something, we catch something. We don't, I mean, just having fun. A mine!
They'll have until 11:45 to catch the longest trout.
A little bit bigger. Oh, yeah, it's a little baby.
The weather's cooperating. And I think people are just anxious to get out, and it's nice weather, and we're outside, so we can be safe and have a good time.
I know, it's like a meditation-type deal, so it takes you out of the real world, I guess you could say. It's real nice out here, just to be out here, enjoying the view. It's a nice little park.
It's like one of the bigger water holes, you know, in our area. The more attention we can get to it, the more fishermen, you know, more people buy licenses.
We will have another one of these in July for our campout, and that'll be a catfish tournament. So follow us on our social media pages to make sure you stay ahead of what's happening, coming up with parks.
If we don't catch anything, I don't care. It's just, we're just having fun. Fishy, fishy!
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City. 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally-recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce. With 72% of our population being bilingual, we stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally-recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunity to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality, with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
We're so happy it's finally here. This is the Safe Outdoor Act. We've been working on it for many years. All animal shelters advocates understand that no longer will animals, dogs, canines specifically, be allowed to be contained or housed on a chain. People use chains because they're so inexpensive. Chains belong on trucks, not animals. It's inhumane, and it hurts them. So shelter is a necessity, that they must have food and water, and a trolley system of some sort. So we'll help you set that up. This act gives us a little more teeth to go in, gives us stronger law enforcement. The fines are severe. The first citation is $500, the second is $2,000. Your information will go into our database, including your address. We will know that you have been cruel to animals, and we will pull animals and restrict you having one.
Rene Herrera is getting ready to start his shift as an animal welfare officer, a job that he has done for six years.
The reason why I do it is because animals don't have a voice, and I feel the need to be there to protect them.
But today is not just any day, as the new Safe Outdoor Dogs Act has come into effect in Texas.
Which means that canines cannot be restrained with industrial chains, and also to adequate food, water, and shelter, and shade as well. And to put the dogs inside when it's in extreme weather, which is cold or very hot temperatures.
Rene is responding to the report of a pit bull that could be in an inappropriate space.
Yes, so the lady allowed us to see behind the property, to see if the dogs were restrained. They gave us a call of the canine not being contained properly. So he checks out okay. He looks alert and active. That was one of my main concerns.
Out took everything is in order. Rene reminds the owner about the new law.
So like I said, ma'am, it is an issue, your dog's being loose at large, so you could tie him up, but it cannot be with an industrial chain.
Violations of the Safe Outdoor Dogs Act are considered a Class C misdemeanor, punishable by a fine up to $500.
Hey, this is one of our dogs that we picked up today. He's going to be taken to the shelter, because he was restrained loose at large for not being restrained.
In outtook, some may complain about this new law. For Rene, the most important thing is the safety of the pets.
We have the vaccines here, we've got the kids getting gifts, free food, the games. I mean, it's just a great, great, great event.
The event is made to see how the neighborhood associations and the residents around here want to do with these three properties that were proposed to us by the county.
We have four options.
We're doing what we set out to do, which is try to get as much community participation and, you know, ideas as to what we can do with the properties.
I came out here in support. Hopefully, we could do something better with this area. I remember this area being really beautiful when I was a kid. And the old theater here, the Azteca Theater, was really nice.
It started off as a beautiful theater, and then it was a dinner theater.
The Valley Theater from the 1940s till about the 1970s. If you ask anybody, they remember it as a naked harem. They don't remember it as a theater, they remember it as a naked harem, and we need to take that stigma off this neighborhood.
It was a criminal situation. We're going to turn this into a beautiful mental health opportunity. We're asking all the families to come in, answer the survey.
We're limited, but, you know, because of Chapter 59. But depends how we handle it, how we word it, we can get a lot of things done for this community.
Yeah, they could turn it into something that's going to help the community, of course. Anything would be fine.
I'd like to see this torn down, all three properties torn down, come in with a community wellness center.
We needed to keep it within the restriction of mental health. Then, mental health has a lot of things, like well-being, a community center, everything's related. The other thing is education, that's going to be a very important component. And we've got not only this property, but the next two properties are part of this situation. So looking forward to something great that we do in the area of mental health.
I'm very optimistic. I think that this site will be something really nice, something that our community desperately needs.
You can give them the survey.
With all of us putting our little minds together, we're going to have something beautiful for this community.
We stocked the lake on Thursday.
1,528 all rainbow trout.
Kept the lake closed till this morning. Today, we have our winter trout reeling.
You just rub garlic down the tail. Well, you put it starting at the head, just rub it down the tail.
Right now, we're using the fake worms. You try to replicate whatever they'll naturally eat.
We had 52 pre-registrations, and this morning, we had another 25.
There's a lot of people out today, so it's pretty neat to have a lot of people come out.
Just a couple of nibbles, that's it. But nothing yet. Just down, just practically putting it in a little ball, just to put it right here on this triple hook.
Wait here for two hours, and then that one second of catching a fish, man, like, there's nothing that beats the thrill. So hoping to get more.
This is a family event, just to kind of have fun. That's it. We catch something, we catch something. We don't, I mean, just having fun.
They'll have until 11:45 to catch the longest trout.
A little bit bigger. Oh, yeah, it's a little baby.
The weather's cooperating. And I think people are just anxious to get out, and it's nice weather, and we're outside, so we can be safe and have a good time.
I know, it's like a meditation-type deal, so it takes you out of the real world, I guess you could say. It's real nice out here, just to be out here, enjoying the view. It's a nice little park.
It's like one of the bigger water holes, you know, in our area. The more attention we can get to it, the more fishermen, you know, more people buy licenses.
We will have another one of these in July for our campout, and that'll be a catfish tournament. So follow us on our social media pages to make sure you stay ahead of what's happening, coming up with parks.
If we don't catch anything, I don't care. It's just, we're just having fun. Fishy, fishy!
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City. 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally-recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce. With 72% of our population being bilingual, we stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally-recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunity to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality, with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
We're so happy it's finally here. This is the Safe Outdoor Act. We've been working on it for many years. All animal shelters advocates understand that no longer will animals, dogs, canines specifically, be allowed to be contained or housed on a chain. People use chains because they're so inexpensive, but chains belong on trucks, not animals. It's inhumane and it hurts them. So shelter is a necessity, that they must have food and water and a trolley system of some sort. So we'll help you set that up. This act gives us a little more teeth to go in, gives us stronger law enforcement. The fines are severe. The first citation is 500, the second is 2,000. Your information will go into our database, including your address. We will know that you have been cruel to animals and we will pull animals and restrict you having one.
Rene Herrera is getting ready to start his shift as an animal welfare officer, a job that he has done for six years.
The reason why I do it is because animals don't have a voice and I feel the need to be there to protect them.
But today is not just any day, as the new Safe Outdoor Dogs Act has come into effect in Texas.
Which means that canines cannot be restrained with industrial chains and also to adequate food, water, and shelter, and shade as well, and to put the dogs inside when it's in extreme weather, which is cold or very hot temperatures.
Rene is responding to the report of a pit bull that could be in an inappropriate space.
Yes, so the lady allowed us to see behind the property, to see if the dogs were restrained. They gave us a call of the canine not being contained properly. So he checks out okay. He looks alert and active, that was one of my main concerns.
Out took everything is in order. Rene reminds the owner about the new law.
So like I said, ma'am, it is an issue, your dog's being loose at large, so you could tie him up, but it cannot be with an industrial chain.
Violations of the Safe Outdoor Dogs Act are considered a class senior minor, punishable by a fine up to $500.
Hey, this is one of our dogs that we picked up today. He's going to be taken to the shelter because he was restrained at large for not being restrained.
In out took, some may complain about this new law. For Rene, the most important thing is the safety of the pets.
We have the vaccines here, we've got the kids getting gifts.
Free food, the games, I mean, it's just a great, great, great event.
The event is made to see how the neighborhood associations and the residents around here want to do with these three properties that were proposed to us by the county.
We have four options.
We're doing what we set out to do, which is try to get as much community participation and, you know, ideas as to what we can do with the properties.
Well, I came out here in support, hopefully we could do something better with this area. I remember this area, it's been really beautiful when I was a kid. And the old theater here, the Azteca Theater, was really nice.
It started off as a beautiful theater, and then it was a dinner theater.
The Valley Theater from the 1940s till about the 1970s. If you ask anybody, they remember it as a naked harem. They don't remember it as a theater, they remember it as a naked harem, and we need to take that stigma off this neighborhood.
It was a criminal situation. We're going to turn this into a beautiful mental health opportunity. We're asking all the families to come in, answer the serving.
We're limited, but you know, because of chapter 59, but depends on we handle it, how we word it, we can get a lot of things done for this community.
Yeah, they could turn it into something that's going to help the community, of course. Anything would be fine.
I'd like to see this torn down, all three properties torn down, come in with a community wellness center.
We needed to keep it within the restriction of mental health. Their mental health has a lot of things like well-being, a community center, everything's related. The other thing is education, that's going to be a very important component. And we've got not only this property, but the next two properties are part of this situation. So looking forward to something great that we do in the area of mental health.
I'm very optimistic. I think that this site will be something really nice, something that our community desperately needs. With all of us putting our little minds together, we're going to have something beautiful for this community.
We stocked the lake on Thursday.
1528, all rainbow trout.
Kept the lake closed till this morning. Today we have our winter trout reeling.
You just rub garlic down the tail. Well, you put it starting at the head, just rub it down the tail.
Right now, we're using the fake worms. You try to replicate whatever they'll naturally eat.
We had 52 pre-registrations and this morning we had another 25.
There's a lot of people out today, so it's pretty neat to have a lot of people come out.
Just a couple of nibbles, that's it, but nothing yet. Just down, just practically put it in a little ball, just to put it right here on this triple hook.
Wait here for two hours and then that one second of catching a fish, man, like there's nothing that beats the thrill. Let's hope we can get more.
This is a family event, just to kind of have fun, that's it. We catch something, we catch something, we don't, I mean, just having fun. A mine!
They'll have until 11:45 to catch the longest trout.
A little bit bigger. Oh yeah, it's a little baby.
The weather's cooperating and I think people are just anxious to get out and it's nice weather and we're outside, so we can be safe and have a good time.
I know, it's like a meditation type deal, so takes you out of the real world, I guess you could say. It's real nice out here, just to be out here, enjoying the view. It's a nice little park.
It's like one of the bigger water holes, you know, in our area. The more attention we can get to it, the more fishermen, you know, more people buy licenses.
We will have another one of these in July for our campout and that'll be a catfish tournament. So follow us on our social media pages to make sure you stay ahead of what's happening, coming up with parks.
If we don't catch anything, I don't care, it's just, we're just having fun. Fishy fishy.
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce. With 72% of our population being bilingual, we stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business, but we also keep true to our But we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
We're so happy it's finally here. This is the Safe Outdoor Act. We've been working on it for many years. All animal shelters advocates understand that no longer will animals, dogs, canines specifically, be allowed to be contained or housed on a chain. People use chains because they're so inexpensive. Chains belong on trucks, not animals. It's inhumane, and it hurts them. So shelter is a necessity that they must have, food and water, and a trolley system of some sort. So we'll help you set that up. This act gives us a little more teeth to go in, gives us stronger law enforcement. The fines are severe. The first citation is $500, the second is $2,000. Your information will go into our database, including your address. We will know that you have been cruel to animals, and we will pull animals and restrict you having one.
Rene Herrera is getting ready to start his shift as an animal welfare officer, a job that he has done for six years.
The reason why I do it is because animals don't have a voice, and I feel the need to be there to protect them.
But today is not just any day, as the new Safe Outdoor Dogs Act has come into effect in Texas.
Which means that canines cannot be restrained with industrial chains, and also to adequate food, water, and shelter, and shade as well, and to put the dogs inside when it's in extreme weather, which is cold or very hot temperatures.
Rene is responding to the report of a pit bull that could be in an inappropriate space.
Yes, so the lady allowed us to see behind the property, to see if the dogs were restrained. They gave us a call of the canine not being contained properly. So he checks out okay. He looks a little inactive. That was one of my main concerns.
Outdoke, everything is in order. Rene reminds the owner about the new law.
So like I said, ma'am, it is an issue, your dog's being loose at large, so you could tie him up, but it cannot be with an industrial chain.
Violations of the Safe Outdoor Dogs Act are considered a Class C misdemeanor, punishable by a fine up to $500.
Hey, this is one of our dogs that we picked up today. He's going to be taken to the shelter, because he was stray loose at large for not being restrained.
In Outdoke, some may complain about this new law. For Rene, the most important thing is the safety of the pets.
We have the vaccines here. We've got the kids getting gifts, free food, the games. I mean, it's just a great, great, great event.
The event is made to see how the neighborhood associations and the residents around here want to do with these three properties that were proposed to us by the county.
We have four options.
We're doing what we set out to do, which is try to get as much community participation and, you know, ideas as to what we can do with the properties.
Well, I came out here in support. Hopefully, we could do something better with this area. I remember this area being really beautiful when I was a kid. And the old theater here, the Azteca Theater, was really nice.
It started off as a beautiful theater, and then it was a dinner theater.
The Valley Theater from the 1940s till about the 1970s. If you ask anybody, they remember it as a naked harem. They don't remember it as a theater. They remember it as a naked harem, and we need to take that stigma off this neighborhood.
It was a criminal situation. We're going to turn this into a beautiful mental health opportunity. We're asking all the families to come in, answer the serving.
We're limited, but, you know, because of Chapter 59. But depends on how we handle it, how we word it, we can get a lot of things done for this community.
Yeah, if they could turn it into something that's going to help the community, of course. Anything would be fine.
I'd like to see this torn down, all three properties torn down, come in with a community wellness center.
We needed to keep it within the restriction of mental health. Then, mental health has a lot of things, like well-being, a community center, everything's related. The other thing is education, that's going to be a very important component. And we've got not only this property, but the next two properties are part of this situation. So looking forward to something great that we do in the area of mental health.
I'm very optimistic. I think that this site will be something really nice, something that our community desperately needs. With all of us putting our little minds together, we're going to have something beautiful for this community.
We stocked the lake on Thursday.
1528, all rainbow trout.
Kept the lake closed till this morning. Today, we have our winter trout reeling.
You just rub garlic down the tail. Well, you put it starting at the head, just rub it down the tail.
Right now, we're using the fake worms. You try to replicate whatever they'll naturally eat.
We had 52 pre-registrations, and this morning, we had another 25.
There's a lot of people out today, so it's pretty neat to have a lot of people come out.
Just a couple of nibbles, that's it. But nothing yet. I'm just practically putting it in a little ball, just to put it right here on this triple hook.
Wait here for two hours, and then that one second of catching a fish, man, like there's nothing that beats the thrill. Let's hope we can get more.
This is a family event, just to kind of have fun. That's it. We catch something, we catch something, we don't. I mean, just having fun.
They'll have until 11:45 to catch the longest trout.
A little bit bigger. Oh, yeah, it's a little baby.
The weather's cooperating, and I think people are just anxious to get out, and it's nice weather, and we're outside, so we can be safe and have a good time.
I know, it's like a meditation-type deal, so takes you out of the real world, I guess you could say. It's real nice out here, just to be out here, enjoying the view. It's a nice little park.
It's like one of the bigger water holes in our area. The more attention we can get to it, the more fishermen, you know, more people buy licenses.
We will have another one of these in July for our campout, and that'll be a catfish tournament. So follow us on our social media pages to make sure you stay ahead of what's happening, coming up with parks.
If we don't catch anything, I don't care. We're just having fun.
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City. 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally-recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large U.S. cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the U.S.-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The County of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality, with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Commissioners Court has reconvened to regular open session. Item number eight, discuss and take appropriate action regarding El Paso County's preparation and response for COVID-19.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. I believe we have Dr. Ocaranza on the line.
Excellent. Welcome, Doctor.
Hey, Dr. O.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners. If I may, I'll share my screen for a short presentation, and it will be a good visualization of what is happening with the COVID at this moment. And if you allow me, just... I don't know. Are you able to see my presentation or not yet?
Yes, sir.
Yes? All right, excellent. Very good. So, in summary, we continue to see a decline in all the indicators for the COVID-19. We had a reduction in the positive cases, which is even now greater than 78% on the seven-day average. The cases per capita or per 100,000, we continue to see a decline in all this number of cases. We have to just mention that the cases that we report, the ones that are reported to the Health Department, and there's still going to be people that are going to be doing the home testing, and those, sometimes they don't report to the Health Department. And but it gives us a good idea of what the level of activity we're having in our community. We're still not out of the woods yet, and we're still higher than what the CDC considers are a high transmission rate. Hospitalizations, we're about half of what we saw at our peak point, which it was over 500 hospitalized patients due to COVID-19. Now, we're, this is today, 276. At the moment that I did the presentation, it was about 30%, but now we see that it's even lower. One of the foundations of prevention that we continue to recommend the community is the vaccination, and in particular, the booster shot. The booster is showing over and over how it's able to prevent this new variant, the Omicron, and also the VA2, which is a subvariant of the Omicron. And that's why we will continue to strongly recommend the community to go and get your booster shot. For those that haven't received it because they're concerned about the reaction that they had to the second dose, please go get your booster shot. It is the best form of protection that we're going to be having against this variant. And we will see in a second with the other visualizations what the situation is in El Paso compared to Texas. We are seeing an overall improvement with all the indicators, so it's looking very bright that in the near future, we'll be able to see levels that are going to be very low that hopefully will consider to be the endemic. We probably are going to be seeing levels that are going to be higher during the fall and the winter, and then the spring and the fall, I mean, the spring and the summer, I'm sorry. We will be able to see levels that are going to be very low, similar to what we see with influenza, in which we see various low levels during the spring and summer and high levels during the influenza season, which is going to be the fall and the winter. COVID is a respiratory virus that will continue to change, and we're going to continue seeing new variants throughout the years, but COVID is here to stay with us. And that's why we continue to recommend the vaccination as the best way to protect, especially those that are vulnerable. Here are the number of positive cases per 100,000, and we put the comparison between the United States and Texas. We see that we're still higher than the other comparisons. That's why we're not out of the woods yet, but we're in a very, very encouraging trend, which is a downward trend. We peaked in the third week of January, and after that, we're seeing a very sharp decline in this number of cases, which was what it was expected to see and what we saw in some other parts of the United States with the Omicron variant. The other factor that is protective for our community is the very high level of vaccination. But we need to encourage people to come and get the booster shot, because that one, we have seen that it's slowly improving and coming up. We need to encourage and invite the people that receive the two doses of the COVID vaccine to come and receive the booster shot. Some studies have shown that it can prevent hospitalization up to 90% for those that have the booster shot. It is very, very important, and we have mentioned previously the importance about the booster vaccine, and along with other non-pharmacological interventions, such as the hygiene, such as the distancing and staying home when somebody's sick, that's going to help us prevent a lot more of these hospitalizations and unfortunately, the fatalities. We will continue to hear about the fatalities, because that is the lead indicator of what was happening within the hospitalizations. These are the hospitalizations per 100,000, in which El Paso continues to be higher than Texas and the United States, but nonetheless, we're in a downward trend, which is very encouraging for the near future. And also, the ICU hospitalizations, see how striking the differences between El Paso and Texas and the U.S. That's why our community has many vulnerabilities that can make us utilize a lot more of the ICU, a lot more beds in the hospitals, and that's why we continue to be very conservative in our approach and how we respond to these outbreaks of the COVID. And what are we looking for in the near future? As mentioned previously, we will see new variants, but thanks to, that we're going to be ready to learn more is if this new variant is going to be more infectious or not, if the new variant is going to cause a more severe disease, and if the new variant will escape our immune system by not being able to target it by the immune system or the immune response that we produce after the vaccination. And there is a possibility that some of these variants might escape that, but also how effective are going to be the medications that we have available against COVID if we have a new variant? All those are the factors that we're going to be trying to learn and consider to have any more recommendations. And also, we're going to be very vigilant as how those new variants behave in our community and across the country as well. The hospitalizations and the deaths are the two indicators that we're going to be following closely, as he says about the severity of the disease in our community. We have many other indicators, such as the positivity rate, such as the new cases per capita, but if we see that the new, there's a large number of new cases, but not as many hospitalizations, it's not going to be as concerning as if we see a very sharp rise in the hospitalizations and deaths. Vaccination, vaccination, vaccination is, again, the foundation of all the preventive measures now that we have it available, and we're awaiting to see the response from the FDA and the CDC as what are going to be the recommendations for the vaccination of children six months to five years. But for now, we need to focus in vaccinated, all those that are older than five years of age, and for everybody that is 12 years of age and older. I want to repeat again and emphasize that we need to continue to tell them to come and get their booster vaccine. In the future, our focus is going to be, continue to protect those that are considered most vulnerable or the highest risk, and it will continue to be evolving the way that we respond to the COVID-19, even if it's not going to be a pandemic anymore, but definitely it will cause a rise in the hospitalizations. And unfortunately, some other people are going to pass away from complications of COVID-19, but we will continue to emphasize those preventive measures to minimize the hospitalization and death in those high-risk groups. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Let me stop presenting.
Very good. That's a great, very educational, Doctor. Thank you for that. Any questions for the Doctor? We do not have any at this time, Dr. Ocaranza, but we do thank you. Happy Valentine's, and thank you for continuing to educate and, you know, that balance between we're sort of leaving, leaving but behind, but we still have some challenges. I think that really emphasizes that we seem to be like at that place where we really don't know, you know, how much the trend is going to go one way or the other. So, thank you.
Thank you, Judge, and again, we're not out of the woods yet, but we're having a very encouraging trend at this moment.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
I see we have Chief Rodriguez, Judge.
Okay. Chief.
Hi, good morning or good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. Just a quick operational update. So, touching first on testing, just like the trend that Dr. Ocaranza was describing, we're also seeing that in our testing. So last week, system-wide, approximately 12,000 tests were administered across the entire system, and that's a 34% reduction in testing from the previous week, which we did a little over 18,000 test system-wide. The week prior to that, just to give a little, kind of a little bit more impression on our daily averages, on the week prior, between our mega sites, this is just for our mega sites and COVID clinics, we were averaging about 2,500 tests per day, and that's gone down significantly across the entire week, week after week, so it continues to go down. Approximately one month ago, just for some perspective, we were doing system-wide across all the systems, all the clinics, all the hospitals, the mega sites, we were doing over 48,000 tests per week, and since that peak, we've seen a 75% reduction in peak weekly demand. So we were seeing a positive trend, as always. Testing's always a good indicator of that community spread, so as that number goes down, it gives us some encouragement. Mega sites, of course, are wait times are much less, you know, less than 10 minutes at each of the sites. We did have an adjustment in the hours for the various testing sites because of the lack of demand, so some of those times have been adjusted. We've shared that with the court. Also, the testing continues in Vinton and Fabin's. On Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, they're out at Fabin's, and Tuesdays and Thursdays in Vinton, but the numbers have been relatively low at those sites. Our regional infusion center continues to provide infusions through the, for the community for those that qualify. That, that number of infusions is ultimately dependent on the supply of the monoclonal antibodies, but there's encouragement, encouraging news that that supply is increasing, but also that's going to match up well to our decreased cases overall, so that's positive. We continue to do well on our vaccines, of course. Fully vaccinated, we're at 76.4 for those five, five years of age and older, and then for our population over 65, we're at 93.92, so those numbers continue to increase. We've been relatively consistent for the last, since the beginning of the new year, we've been averaging anywhere between 14, anywhere between 15,000 and 20,000 vaccines per day. A lot of that is boosters, and last week, we did 14,777. The week prior to that, 6,938, so we continue to do very well there. Vaccines and boosters are still being provided at our various COVID clinics and at the convention center, so people can still register for those. That's still widely available, so. If you all have any questions for me, thank you, and look forward to speaking with you all next week.
I was going to ask you, would it be good to have a percentage like we do that has all three of them, or did I miss that? We don't have that right to be able to say a percentage has the entire, you know, the two vaccines and the booster, just to give us a sense of where we're at in combination of the three.
Yes, sir. Well, we'll work on that. We get those numbers provided by the state, so we'll work with them on making that calculation.
Any ideas why, I mean, you know, the booster, I mean, I guess we sort of expected that, right, that the booster would not be as, people wouldn't be that enthusiastic? Do you feel the numbers are at a good place? We could always do better, but what's your, your view on the number of people who have gotten their booster?
Sure. We've been trending lower than the national average in terms of boosters across. What we're concerned about, and one area that we want to look at closely, is those that are most at risk, looking at those with, with the underlying health conditions, those that are older, you know, making sure that they have those boosters. But I'll, I'll work with Dr. Ocaranza now and get you those figures. That way, we have a, and we have that.
Thank you, Chief. Joel?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief, and Dr. Ocaranza.
Okay, Judge, it's that time for weekly reports, COVID reports from the court. Judge, do you have any reports?
Yeah, no, just still working on that, waiting for the numbers from Chihuahua as to the number of kids that they feel they could bring to the border. I've already, I had a very nice meeting. Zmeralda wasn't able to be there. Commissioner Garcia was not able to be there, but they were very enthusiastic that they liked what we were doing and were very enthusiastic to support those kinds of numbers, which I was concerned. That's 150,000 children, twice, and that did not scare them off. I mean, I was a little concerned that they'd be worried, so it looks like, once again, the logistics, if we could settle that and the cost involved with that, I think we could do something similar. It's just going to take longer because you've got 150,000 kids, twice, and so now you have to wait the time to do the second shot, and so it's, it's, but I think it's a great humanitarian. As you know, they, they don't have the vaccine for children under the age of 18 at all in Mexico, so we would be doing a huge humanitarian effort. So that's all I've got, Joel.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioner Leon?
Nothing new for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Stott?
Nothing for me.
Okay, Commissioner Robinson? Commissioner Alguín?
Thank you, Joel. Actually, I just, I was hoping that Irene could jump on really quickly. When we, as you all know, when we saw that spike, we had to close all of the county senior centers, and so now, in coordination with Dr. Ocaranza, it seems that all of the senior centers will And so now, in coordination with Dr. Ocaranza, it seems that all of the senior centers will be reopening. So I'm just hoping maybe Irene can give us a really quick, just update on how that's going and the hours and what we're seeing. But I know our seniors are going to be incredibly, incredibly happy to be able to return to the senior centers.
She's not on, Commissioner? Would you, Joel, would you like me to call her?
Yeah. Could you see if you can call her in?
I'm not sure, Joel, if you know the hours. I was trying to look it up from her last update that she sent, but she probably has it off the top of her head.
No, I don't, I don't right now. But I know she's trying to follow the trends and what's going on. Hopefully, we'll, what we planned last was to open up very quickly. In fact, we expected this decline that we're seeing in the numbers so that it would give us opportunity later this month to hopefully open up again, but.
Yes, and I think that she was able to coordinate that with Dr. Ocaranza.
Yeah. Irene, hey.
Irene.
How are you? Hey, Commissioner Alguín has a question about the senior centers.
Yes, I just wanted, I was hoping you could share the good news with everyone about the senior centers opening now that you and Dr. Ocaranza have looked at the numbers and the trends going down.
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing me on. I had moved on to other things here at the office. But so yes, we did receive an email from Dr. Ocaranza. We've been, I've been in communication with Dr. O since probably late December, when we were starting to see the Omicron surge kind of hit our community. And I touched base with him about how that's affecting what population, age group that was affected. He did share with me that the most at risk continue to be our elderly. You, we made a decision with Dr. O's recommendation that we would close the centers temporarily. Then last week, we received great news from Dr. O, seeing that those cases are in a decline and the risk level is low for our seniors at this point. We decided to reopen. So effective today, the centers are open, full service for congregation, for activities. And these are our county centers. I just want to clarify. So these are our county centers of Fabin's, San Isario, Montanavista, and Canutia. So happy to report that.
Thank you. That's wonderful news. And thank you, Dr. Ocaranza, for all of your help with this.
It has been a pleasure, Commissioner, and working with the county personnel. Ms. Valenzuela has been instrumental and also Ms. Veronica Myers and everybody that you have on the team that look out for the best interests of the seniors and all the county residents. So I'm sure that the seniors are going to be ecstatic and so happy to be able to meet and greet their friends over there. And we know that it is a very essential service and that's the only activity that sometimes many seniors have. And also, the benefit that they have with the meals, with the socialization and the positive impact on the mental health.
Yes, definitely. Thank you, Irene. Thank you, Dr. O.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. O.
Thanks, Irene. And Judge, I think that's all for this item. Commissioner Alguín, did you have anything?
No, no.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Joel. Jessica?
We'll take no action for item number eight. We'd like to go ahead and go to item number 19 before we move into executive. Item 19, addendum to the agenda. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding sending out redistricting information to households who are impacted by a change in justice of the peace precincts due to redistricting.
Joel, you'll be?
I can, I know that Betsy put the item on, but I requested as well as the JPs, who also reached out to my office, Judge Herrera, JP3, he reached out to our office because they saw the flyers that we sent out regarding the Commissioner's Court changes. And they wanted to ask if we would be willing to try and do the same thing for the changes with the JP courts. Not just to allow voters to understand that they may be in a different area, but also for folks that are filing in the different JP courts. Because there's some confusion, I think, amongst people on where to file too. So Joel, did you want to?
Yes. Yes, it's my understanding, we have very short timeframes on this as well. So we're just asking the court to approve us to move forward with the postcards for them. I think we have some deadlines by tomorrow. And Dr., our communications manager and Claudia are working on that. But yeah, we're just asking for the court to approve us to, to have the discretion to work with them, to put, to update the cards and send them out.
Same concept.
Yeah, same concept.
Yes. I think it's very important.
Yeah, I also heard from some of the JPs in my area. And in retrospect, we probably could have figured out a way to do it with that first card. But unfortunately, we didn't. So the good thing is that we're able to now quickly get that information out. So I would move to approve the item.
Second?
I'm sorry, can we just have the motion stated?
Yes.
To be clear for the record?
The motion would be to go forward with sending out a redistricting information card to households who are impacted by the change in the JP precincts.
And then just for clarification as well, the issue that had brought back to the court a couple of weeks ago was on the signature. The signature will be the same in terms of it coming from the court. So just similar format that we did the last time, except for JP constable precincts. Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Alguín?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion. This brings us to item 16. Executive session. Commissioner's Court will recess into executive session to discuss items 16A through 16D pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.087. Commissioner's Court will reconvene to take official action.
We're so happy it's finally here. This is the Safe Outdoor Act. We've been working on it for many years. All animal shelters advocates understand that no longer will animals, dogs, canines specifically, be allowed to be contained or housed on a chain. People use chains because they're so inexpensive. But chains belong on trucks, not animals. It's inhumane and it hurts them. So shelter is a necessity that they must have, food and water, and a trolley system of some sort. So we'll help you set that up. This act gives us a little more teeth to go in, gives us stronger law enforcement. The fines are severe. The first citation is 500, the second is 2,000. Your information will go into our database, including your address. We will know that you have been cruel to animals and we will pull animals and restrict you having one.
Rene Herrera is getting ready to start his shift as an animal welfare officer, a job that he has done for six years.
The reason why I do it is because animals don't have a voice and I feel the need to be there to protect them.
But today is not just any day, as the new Safe Outdoor Dogs Act has come into effect in Texas.
Which means that canines cannot be restrained with industrial chains and also to adequate food, water, and shelter, and shade as well. And to put the dogs inside when it's in extreme weather, which is cold or very hot temperatures.
Rene is responding to the report of a pit bull that could be in an inappropriate space.
Yes, so the lady allowed us to see the, behind the property, to see if the dogs were restrained. They gave us a call of the canine not being contained properly. So he checks out okay. He looks alert and active. That was one of my main concerns.
Outlook everything is in order. Rene reminds the owner about the new law.
So like I said, ma'am, it is an issue, your dog's being loose at large. So you could tie him up, but it cannot be with an industrial chain.
Violations of the Safe Outdoor Dogs Act are considered a class C misdemeanor, punishable by a fine up to $500.
Hey, this is one of our dogs that we picked up today. He's going to be taken to the shelter because he was stray loose at large for not being restrained.
In outlook, some may complain about this new law. For Rene, the most important thing is the safety of the pets.
We have the vaccines here. We've got the kids getting gifts, free food, the games. I mean, it's just a great, great, great event.
The event is made to see how the neighborhood associations and the residents around here want to do with these three properties that were proposed to us by the county.
We have four options.
We're doing what we set out to do, which is try to get as much community participation and, you know, ideas as to what we can do with the properties.
Well, I came out here in support. Hopefully, we could do something better with this area. I remember this area being really beautiful when I was a kid. And the old theater here, the Esteca Theater, was really nice.
It started off as a beautiful theater and then it was a dinner theater.
The Valley Theater from the 1940s till about the 1970s. If you ask anybody, they remember it as a naked harem. They don't remember it as a theater. They remember it as a naked harem. And we need to take that stigma off this neighborhood.
It was a criminal situation. We're going to turn this into a beautiful mental health opportunity. We're asking all the families to come in, answer the serving.
We're limited, but you know, because of chapter 59. But depends how we handle it, how we word it, we can get a lot of things done for this community.
Yeah, they could turn it into something that's going to help the community, of course. Anything would be fine.
I'd like to see this torn down, all three properties torn down. Come in with a community wellness center.
We needed to keep it within the restriction of mental health. Then mental health has a lot of things, like well-being, a community center, everything's related. The other thing is education. That's going to be a very important component. And we've got not only this property, but the next two properties are part of this situation. So looking forward to something great that we do in the area of mental health.
I'm very optimistic. I think that this site will be something really nice, something that our community desperately needs. With all of us putting our little minds together, we're going to have something beautiful for this community. for this community.
We stocked the lake on Thursday.
1,528, all rainbow trout.
Kept the lake closed till this morning. Today, we have our winter trout reeling.
You just rub garlic down the tail, well, you put it, starting at the head, just rub it down the tail.
Right now, we're using the fake worms. You try to replicate whatever they'll naturally eat.
We had 52 preregistrations, and this morning, we had another 25.
There's a lot of people out today, so it's pretty neat to have a lot of people come out.
Just a couple of nibbles, that's it, but nothing, nothing yet. Just, I'm just practically putting it in a little ball, just to put it right here on this triple hook.
Wait here for two hours, and then that one second of catching a fish, man, like there's nothing that beats the thrill. Let's hope we can get more.
This is a family event, just to kind of have fun, that's it. We catch something, we catch something, we don't, I mean, just having fun. A mine!
They don't have until 11:45 to catch the longest trout.
A little bit bigger. Oh yeah, it's a little baby.
The weather's cooperating, and I think people are just anxious to get out, and it's nice weather, and we're outside, so we can be safe and have a good time.
I know, it's like a meditation type deal, so takes you out of the real world, I guess you could say. It's real nice out here, just to be out here, enjoying the view. It's a nice little park.
It's like one of the bigger water holes, you know, in our area. The more attention we can get to it, the more fishermen, you know, the more people buy licenses.
We will have another one of these in July for our campout, and that'll be a catfish tournament. So follow us on our social media pages to make sure you stay ahead of what's happening, coming up with parks.
If we don't catch anything, I don't care, it's just, we're just having fun.
It's busy.
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large U.S. cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the U.S.-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business, but we also keep true to our southern hospitality, with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
We're so happy it's finally here. This is the Safe Outdoor Act. We've been working on it for many years. All animal shelters advocates understand that no longer will animals, dogs, canines specifically, be allowed to be contained or housed on a chain. People use chains because they're so inexpensive, but chains belong on trucks, not animals. It's inhumane and it hurts them. So shelter is a necessity that they must have, food and water, and a trolley system of some sort. So we'll help you set that up. This act gives us a little more teeth to go in, gives us stronger law enforcement. The fines are severe. The first citation is $500, the second is $2,000. Your information will go into our database, including your address. We will know that you have been cruel to animals, and we will pull animals and restrict you having one.
Rene Herrera is getting ready to start his shift as an animal welfare officer, a job that he has done for six years.
The reason why I do this is because animals don't have a voice, and I feel the need to be there to protect them.
But today is not just any day, as the new Safe Outdoor Dogs Act has come into effect in Texas.
Which means that canines cannot be restrained with industrial chains, and also to adequate food, water, and shelter, and shade as well, and to put the dogs inside when it's in extreme weather, which is cold or very hot temperatures.
Rene is responding to the report of a pit bull that could be in an inappropriate space.
Yes, so the lady allowed us to see behind the property to see if the dogs were restrained. They gave us a call of the canine not being contained properly. So he checks out okay. He looks alert and active. That was one of my main concerns.
Out took everything is in order. Rene reminds the owner about the new law.
So like I said, ma'am, it is an issue, your dog's being loose at large, so you could tie him up, but it cannot be with an industrial chain.
Violations of the Safe Outdoor Dogs Act are considered a Class C misdemeanor, punishable by a fine up to $500.
Okay, this is one of our dogs that we picked up today. He's gonna be taken to the shelter because he was restrained at large for not being restrained.
In out took, some may complain about this new law. For Rene, the most important thing is the safety of the pets.
We have the vaccines here, we've got the kids getting gifts, free food, the games. I mean, it's just a great, great, great event.
The event is made to see how the neighborhood associations and the residents around here want to do with these three properties that were proposed to us by the county.
We have four options.
We're doing what we set out to do, which is try to get as much community participation and, you know, ideas as to what we can do with the properties.
Well, I came out here in support, hopefully we could do something better with this area. I remember this area being really beautiful when I was a kid, and the old theater here, the Esteca Theater, was really nice.
It started off as a beautiful theater, and then it was a dinner theater.
The Valley Theater from the 1940s till about the 1970s. If you ask anybody, they remember it as a naked harem. They don't remember it as a theater, they remember it as a naked harem, and we need to take that stigma off this neighborhood.
It was a criminal situation. We're gonna turn this into a beautiful mental health opportunity. We're asking all the families to come in, answer the survey.
We're limited, but you know, because of Chapter 59, but depends how we handle it, how we word it, we can get a lot of things done for this community.
Yeah, they could turn it into something that's gonna help the community, of course. Anything would be fine.
I'd like to see this torn down, all three properties torn down, come in with a community wellness center.
We needed to keep it within the restriction of mental health. Then, mental health has a lot of things, like well-being, a community center, everything's related. The other thing is education, that's gonna be a very important component. And we've got not only this property, but the next two properties are part of this situation. So looking forward to something great that we do in the area of mental health.
I'm very optimistic. I think that this site will be something really nice, something that our community desperately needs. With all of us putting our little minds together, we're gonna have something beautiful for this community. It's real nice out here, just to be out here, enjoying the view. It's a nice little park.
It's like one of the bigger water holes, you know, in our area. The more attention we can get to it, the more fishermen, you know, more people buy licenses.
We will have another one of these in July for our campout, and that'll be a catfish tournament. So follow us on our social media pages to make sure you stay ahead of what's happening, coming up with parks.
If we don't catch anything, I don't care, it's just, we're just having fun.
We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business, but we also keep true to our southern hospitality, with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso.
Rene Herrera is getting ready to start his shift as an animal welfare officer, a job that he has done for six years.
The reason why I do this is because animals don't have a voice and I feel the need to be there to protect them.
But today is not just any day, as the new Safe Outdoor Dogs Act has come into effect
Which means that canines cannot be restrained with industrial chains, and also to adequate food, water, and shelter, and shade as well, and to put the dogs inside when it's in extreme weather, which is cold or very hot temperatures.
Rene is responding to the report of a pit bull that could be in an inappropriate
Yes, so the lady allowed us to see behind the property to see if the dogs were restrained. They gave us a call of the canine not being contained properly. That was one of my main concerns.
Rene reminds the owner about the new law.
So like I said, ma'am, it is an issue, your dog's being loose at large, so you could tie him up, but it cannot be with an industrial chain.
Violations of the Safe Outdoor Dogs Act are considered a Class C misdemeanor, punishable by a fine up to $500.
We're so happy it's finally here. This is the Safe Outdoor Act. We've been working on it for many years. All animal shelters advocates understand that no longer will animals, dogs, canines specifically, be allowed to be contained or housed on a chain. People use chains because they're so inexpensive, but chains belong on trucks, not animals. It's inhumane and it hurts them. So shelter is a necessity that they must have, food and water, and a trolley system of some sort. So we'll help you set that up. This act gives us a little more teeth to go in, gives us stronger law enforcement. The fines are severe. The first citation is 500, the second is 2,000. Your information will go into our database, including your address. We will know that you have been cruel to animals, and we will pull animals and restrict you having one.
Rene Herrera is getting ready to start his shift as an animal welfare officer, a job that he has done for six years.
The reason why I do this is because animals don't have a voice and I feel the need to be there to protect them.
But today is not just any day, as the new Safe Outdoor Dogs Act has come into effect in Texas.
Which means that canines cannot be restrained with industrial chains, and also to adequate food, water, and shelter, and shade as well, and to put the dogs inside when it's in extreme weather, which is cold or very hot temperatures.
Rene is responding to the report of a pit bull that could be in an inappropriate space.
Yes, so the lady allowed us to see behind the property to see if the dogs were restrained. They gave us a call of the canine not being contained properly. So he checks out okay. He looks alert and active. That was one of my main concerns.
Out took everything is in order. Rene reminds the owner about the new law.
So like I said, ma'am, it is an issue, your dog's being loose at large, so you could tie him up, but it cannot be with an industrial chain.
Violations of the Safe Outdoor Dogs Act are considered a Class C misdemeanor, punishable by a fine up to $500.
Okay, this is one of our dogs that we picked up today. He's gonna be taken to the shelter since he was stray loose at large for not being restrained.
In all took some may complain about this new law. For Rene, the most important thing is the safety of the pets. We have the vaccines here, we've got the kids getting gifts, the free food, the games. I mean, it's just a great, great, great event.
The event is made to see how the neighborhood associations and the residents around here want to do with these three properties that were proposed to us by the county.
We have four options.
We're doing what we set out to do, which is try to get as much community participation and, you know, ideas as to what we can do with the properties.
Well, I came out here in support, hopefully we could do something better with this area. I remember this area being really beautiful when I was a kid, and the old theater here, the Esteca Theater, was really nice.
It started off as a beautiful theater, and then it was a dinner theater.
The Valley Theater from the 1940s till about the 1970s. If you ask anybody, they remember it as a naked harem. They don't remember it as a theater, they remember it as a naked harem, and we need to take that stigma off this neighborhood.
It was a criminal situation. We're gonna turn this into a beautiful mental health opportunity. We're asking all the families to come in, answer the survey.
We're limited, but you know, because of Chapter 59, but depends on we handle it, how we word it, we can get a lot of things done for this community.
Yeah, if they could turn it into something that's gonna help the community, of course. Anything would be fine.
I'd like to see this.